Time is 6:03 PM. It is Thursday, July 6th. I'm going to call this special city council meeting to order with the city secretary. Please call the roll.
Mitchell?
Here.
Tobias?
President.
Heiser?
Here.
Flores Cale?
Here.
Zuniga?
Present.
Bradshaw?
Here.
Parsley?
Here.
All right. All members present, we have a quorum. Next up, citizen comments period. Is there anyone who wishes to come forward? Seeing none, I'm going to close citizen comments period. It is now closed. Next up, executive session. Councilman Bradshaw.
Pursuant to Chapter 551 Texas Government Code, the City Council reserves the right to convene into an executive session from time to time as deemed necessary during this meeting. The City Council may convene into an executive session pursuant to any lawful exception contained in Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, including any or all of the following topics. Possible purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real estate pursuant to Section 551 dot zero seven two to deliberate the purchase of real property for public purpose, purchase of property for city facilities and public purposes, and convene into an executive session pursuant to Section 551 dot zero eight seven Texas Government Code to deliberate regarding the offer of economic incentives to one or more business prospects that seek to have, locate, stay, or expand in or near the city. Project Patrick Swayze, Project Lion King, and Project Hot Pursuit.
Good evening, everyone. There was no action taken during executive session. There will be no action taken now. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Okay, we are adjourned. Good evening. The time is 7:10 PM. It is Thursday, July the 6th, and I'm going to call this regular city council meeting to order with the city secretary. Actually, would all please rise to the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With the city secretary, please call the roll.
Mitchell?
Here.
Tobias?
Here.
Heiser?
Here.
Flores Cale?
Here.
Zuniga?
Present.
Bradshaw?
Here.
Parsley?
Here.
All members present, we have a quorum. Next up, approval of the minutes.
All right, Mayor. Going to make a motion to approve the minutes. We've got several of them here. Want to go ahead and make a motion to approve the minutes for a special meeting on June 20th, including the regular meeting for June 20th, to include also approving the minutes for the City Council workshop minutes for June 23rd, workshop meeting minutes for June 24th, and also the workshop meetings for the same day, 24th, including the workshop meeting minutes for June 25th, 2023.
Second.
Motion by Mayor Protem, seconded by Councilmember Parsley, that we approve the minutes as their discussion on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right, motion carries seven to zero. Next up is citizen comments period. At this time, we ask anyone in the audience who wishes to come forward and speak on any item to please do so. We do ask that you direct your comments to the mayor and council, that you limit your comments to three minutes, and that you fill out a citizen comments form and submit that to either myself or the city secretary. I do have two that have signed up to speak. First up, Ms. Betty Conley.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, City Manager. My name is Betty Conley. I live at 87 Eagle Creek Drive in Kyle, Texas, and I am the president of the Kyle Area Senior Zone. So, we want to thank you for everything that you're trying to do for us, and we're looking forward to being a great success. The reason I'm coming up is asking for you if you can possibly move us up on the agenda. A lot of senior citizens cannot drive at night because of the sight with the dark. So, that was the reason I got up here to speak, and thank you all.
All right, thank you. Next up, Winnett Barton.
I'm here to talk to you about a subdivision that my family is planning and hopes to accomplish. It's on land that's been in my family for very, very many years, longer than most people here have been alive. And we, my family got together and decided that we wanted to make this a subdivision and make it very special, because Kyle is very special to all of us, especially to me. So, we've tried to do that. And it thus has a few things that are not in most subdivisions. I think, we think that they are a plus, and we appreciate the work that many of you have done on it already. And tonight, with the final approval, we will be moving ahead soon as we have money designated. We don't have the money to do it ourselves, but we can borrow it. And I think you have all know pretty much what it is and what it means to us. I think that's probably been conveyed to you, and I hope it will be wonderful for Kyle. That's what we plan. That's what we hope, and that's what we're going to try to do. So, thank you for considering it again tonight.
Thank you. That is all the citizen comments forms that I have. Is there anyone else who wishes to come forward and speak? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close citizen comments period. Citizen comments is now closed. Next up is agenda order. Is there anyone who has requests to move any agenda items? Councilmember Floris Cale?
Yes, please. I would like to move up Agenda Items number 25 and 26.
Does anybody have any objections to that?
Negative.
Councilmember Parsley?
Can we move Agenda Item 22, please?
Yes, all right. We will move both of those items to the top of considering possible action. Next up is consent agenda presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Leon Barba, City Engineer. Consent Agenda Item Number Nine is a request for council to approve the selection of engineers that we went through an RFQ process on. We selected four engineers. They ranked as the highest scoring firm, so we recommend those four firms to the City Council for approval.
Is that it?
That's it.
On the consent agenda?
That's it.
Okay.
You want to go over 11?
Sure.
Okay, let me go over 11. There's some property that was dedicated to the city back in '21, I believe, and that property was dedicated by the school district. It was 1.5808 acres. This is a picture showing that property that's being dedicated to the city. What we need to do today is to go ahead and accept this parcel, and that way the mayor can sign off on the document that needs to go to Hayes County for filing. On the next slide, you'll kind of see how that ties into the rest of the brick and mortar project. That's Avenue A, as they call it up at the top. And so, we need that missing link, if you want to call it that, to tie into, to extend Cromwell all the way up to that Avenue A project.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Barba?
I do. Mayor?
Mayor Protem?
Okay, considering Agenda Item Number Nine. Mr. Barba, how many firms were selected on the ratings?
We recommended four firms out of the 28 that submitted.
Okay. Isn't it, were we trying to get up to five at one time?
The RFQ did say five, but we had a tie for five and six, and we decided just to stay with the top four.
Okay.
Mayor Protem, the problem is, we don't know how much work we're going to have over the next two to three years. Sometimes I think we're going to have very little, and then we end up having a lot of work. So, this past time, I'll give you a good example. The RFQ we did back in 2020, we just asked for three. We're just going to name three firms, and we ended up expanding it to five firms, and then we ended up with quite a few number of projects. So, it was a good thing we did expand it to five at that point in time. Right now, for example, I don't see but one wastewater project that we need to have to go out for design and construction. We're probably going to try to focus a bit more on the water side. But as far as road projects, I don't see us having any road projects that they need to work on. So, that's why I was thinking that we may not have enough work for five firms and we may not have enough work for four firms. I didn't want them to get excited about getting on the list, and then all of a sudden, we have no work for them to do.
Okay. Because I was just curious, I was just curious how the rating, how the ratings were to where eventually one was, you said two of them were tied?
Yeah, right here.
Yeah, two of them were tied at 93. So, just curious to know which one was chose over the other in that sense.
The two that were tied at five and six, we did not select, we did not recommend selection of those firms. We just recommended the top four.
So, I was actually going to pull this, because I was going to bring up that question. So, I looked at the scoring rank, and five and six were both very close. And so, you know, I understand the thought of not wanting to have too much work, but since this is something we don't, or thinking you may not have enough work, but since this is something that we don't do very often, my recommendation was going to be just to include them, because then that at least gives the option from Mr. Barba to have a wider pool to select from as projects move forward. I was going to make that recommendation if that was something the council would consider.
Sure. Is that something that we can do? Yes, where we can have both of them?
Mayor Protem, just to let you know, there is work out there to be done. There's plenty of work to be done out there. The problem is your funding. That's the dilemma that we have. So, most citizens would like to work on so many things, but the funding's always the big issue, so.
Yeah, but it's just like you said last time, you had three, and you ended up having to expand it to five. So, and our town is obviously not slowing down. The projects are continuing to expand. So, I was thinking, since obviously five and six were both tied and scored very close to one through four, we could go ahead and include them, and then y'all could move forward from there.
I have a question.
Councilmember?
We are not doing any, like, do we have like a service agreement with all of them? Or are we doing some sort of contract? Or are we just like picking from the four that you had, the four top ones, we will be giving them projects to review, or just like, you know, doing consulting with them, correct? So, if we were to have enough projects for the fours, we would just pull out of this list. Doesn't need to be, do we need to like agree today and saying, hey, let's add the fifth and the sixth firm to this, or can you just do it and bring it to council?
If council decides they want to add the fifth and sixth, we can do that. That's not a problem. What we'll do is, we'll bring a contract back to council from each one of these firms. We'll vet it with their attorneys, our attorneys, and we'll bring a contract back for council to review and approve and sign off on that. And as we come up with the different projects, and what I try to do is balance out the workload, try to keep the amounts even between the different firms, so I don't give one too much and another one not enough work. So, that's my goal as I work through these contracts. Unfortunately, some of the contracts that we have are pretty large, so some firms may not get as much work as the other ones did. But I do try to keep it balanced. That's my goal.
What I'm saying is, if Leon, which is our engineering director, picks four firms and thinks that we might not have enough work to give to the other ones, I don't see the need of adding the other two firms. It's just.
Well, it's a, it's a situation where if the rotation list is going, what we're putting on is a, is a group of firms that he can select from without going through an RFQ process. So, if we have projects that are coming forward, he, you know, are we going to have six projects in the next two to three years? I mean, I feel like that's fairly likely that we will. How many projects did you say you were working on the last meeting? 38?
Thirty to 40, yes.
Okay, 30 to 40. So, it's one of the, but if they're not on the list, they cannot even be considered for the work. It just limits the amount of firms that are available for him to select from.
But will we get into a contract with this last two firms, the fifth and the sixth one?
They won't be.
Will we have to?
They won't be allowed to be considered for the work without going out to RFQ. So, basically, just invites a larger number of engineering firms to the table as Leon's going through his process. He can, he can select and bring contracts straight to us without going through the RFQ process from a wider selection of firms.
And you also have to look at it this way, if I could add to that, Mayor, is that all of these are going to have different expertise in these, in these fields. So, we may be using, I believe, have we used Pave Dawson's before, engineering company before, right?
Yes, we have.
Maybe it's time that we start looking at others to see what else they could bring to the table as well. Maybe some of these could help out with some of our trail systems, or maybe they could help out with some of our road projects. But just to the mayor's point as well, if we have these, all, both of these firms available, if, if one of them, STV, let's say Infrastructure, did we give them a contract, let's just throw it out there. If they get behind where we need something else, we can at least use these other two to help assist with, with other needs for the city. Because again, if you've got 38 projects, you know, why limit our, our contractors or limit our companies in utilizing it there? So, I would, I would go with that recommendation, Mayor.
Second.
All right, I'm going to take Agenda Item Number Nine separately. Are there any other questions on other consent agenda items? Councilmember Floris Cale?
Thank you. I just want to pull Agenda Item Number 10. There's not much I really want to talk about. I just don't know if it's appropriate to spend $26,500 to hire a search company to find us a chief building official. I think that's just a lot of money. And I guess before I would agree to that, I'd want to know what has gone out on the city's behalf from our human resources side?
All right, we'll pull Agenda Item Number 10. We'll pull nine. Does anybody want to have discussions on 11 through 13?
I'd like to make a motion to approve Agenda Items Number 11, 12, and 13.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Floris Cale, seconded by Mayor Protem. Is there, do we approve Agenda Items 11 through 13? It's their discussion on that motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right, motion carries six to zero. I'd like to make a motion to approve Agenda Number Nine with the amendment to increase the, the number of four firms from four to six, and to use the ranking system to allow the fifth and sixth highest scored firms to be included.
Second, the motion.
All right, motion by the mayor, seconded by Mayor Protem. It's their discussion on that motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right, motion carries six to zero. All right, Agenda Item Number 10, Consider Approval of a Professional Services Agreement with Mosaic Public Partners in an Amount of $26,500 to Provide Executive Search Services for the Position of Chief Building Official. Ms. Schmice?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Amber Schmice, Assistant City Manager, for the record. I do have a presentation. It's in your backup. I don't know if you want me to go through, through that, but to Councilmember Flores Cale's question, this, this item, or this job has been advertised on the city's website and on TML. I believe we also, as part of our TML subscription, we get access to Indeed. And we have had a few interviews with some candidates, but felt like they were not the right fit for the city of Kyle. And so, this recruitment firm would help us find those folks. We want to find somebody who's really good at their job at building official, who's not looking for a job. And so, we're hoping that this recruitment firm can help us do that.
Any questions or comments? Motion?
I just, I just fear that we are going to have to do this again with other positions, and then we're going to find ourselves paying firms to hire. I don't know if that's like completely responsible to do.
There it is.
There I am, thank you. I don't know if we'll do it for lots of other positions, but for executive positions and higher paid positions, I found it to be very valuable. A lot of folks, it's a very tight labor market right now. It's difficult to get people to commit, and particularly someone who's going to relocate from another part of the country or another part of the state here. Recruiter can go tell our story in a way that we can't always do, just with a typical job posting or a listing. They can tell more about the city. They can get people interested through that. And they also, when they make these calls, so lots of individuals, it may not be that individual that they talk to, but they learn through that conversation that they know someone else that might be looking for the position. And so, they do that outreach for us. And I've found it to be very successful in the past to build really high performing teams. I know it is expensive, but we're an expensive business. This is a very large, diverse organization now, about 400 employees, over $200 million a year budget, $700 million capital program that you're going to hear about on, on Saturday with our budget process. So, there's a lot of dollars going on. There's a lot of projects. We're supervising $2 million a year in outside contracts for building inspection services. So, this is a person that will help us oversee it, and it's been vacant for a year. So, there's plenty of salary savings that are available for the service. And again, I recommend it to you to help us find a high quality individual that can help move us forward.
Councilmember Floris Cale?
Thank you. Our last building inspector came from Boston, Massachusetts, I believe. And so, I guess I'm just curious how we were able to find him, someone that far, without the use of professional services?
I don't know. I was not here. I think certainly you can find people. We have not been successful in finding them with the traditional means.
Is there any guarantee, like, what if, you know, they bring candidates that are not to the standards? Do we get our money back?
Yeah, you have, you have a guarantee if the candidate is not working out over a period of, I believe it's a year, then we have another search that they will do for us through that process. And I've worked with this firm extensively in my career. They're great consultants. They'll bring us great quality candidates. If we're not happy with the candidates they bring us, they'll keep trying until they get the position filled.
Okay.
Any other questions? I'll just say that, support it. I know this is a new, you know, a new proposal that's coming forward, one of your first, but it seems to me that you're very committed to trying to bring together a high level executive staff that can perform at that, at that high level. And so, for that reason, you know, obviously, if it doesn't work out, maybe it's something that we change in the future. But if, if your experiences lead you to believe that it's the right, if it's the right direction, I can support that, so.
I have a question, too.
Councilmember Zuniga?
So, thank you, Brian. What are the, I guess, main reasons why the position is hard to fill? Is it the pay scale or the experience you were looking for? What, what is, what is preventing the applicant? Since we only had four in over a year?
Right. I think it's a combination of those things. To be a chief building official, you have to have several certifications, and you have to be able to pass the test. And, and the books that they have to be proficient in are many, so they have to know the international code and have to be able to reference that and get that correct on their test. So, it takes several years to get that. There are very few people who actually are qualified to be a chief building official. And sometimes that combined with our, our pay, I know that Brian is committed to making sure, you know, we, we look at the pay as well. Those two factors have, have seemed to be, you know, the, I think, the reason that we're not drawing qualified candidates, but also just because of our outreach, you know, we're not, we're not accessing the same, the same way that a recruitment firm could for us.
So, just with a lot more changes in codes, you have to be more specialist in this area?
Yes, correct.
It's a very particular skill set, very narrow skill set that not everyone has, so there's fewer candidates. And the development, not only in this activity, this area in Kyle, but just all over the state, has been really robust. So, those people are in high demand.
Thank you.
Councilmember Heiser?
I'll just say that, Brian, we hired you for your experience, and if you're going to sit here and tell us this is something that you need, then I think that it's on us to give you the tools that you need to succeed. And if it ends up not working out, we can look at it, revisiting it down the road, so.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve Agenda Item Number 10.
Second.
Motion by the mayor, seconded by Councilmember Zuniga. It's their discussion on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Nay.
All right, motion carries six to one. All right, next up, we're going to bring up Agenda Items 25 and 26. Do you want me to bring them up together?
Thank you.
All right, Agenda Item 25, Report an Update from City Manager on the Status of Council Direction Given to Staff on January 4th, 2022. To Negotiate an Agreement with A&E Design Group, Inc., to Provide Architectural and Design Services, Including Completion of Shovel-Ready Plans, Specifications and Construction Bid Documents for a New Senior Activity and Community Center Facility to Be Constructed on City-Owned Land. And to Bring Back an Agreement with All Terms and Conditions, Including Contract Amount for City Council's Approval at a Future Council Meeting, and Discussion of Possible Action to Direct City Manager to Develop an Action Plan to Include a Timeline for the Completion of Major Steps, and Funding Options to Design, Build, Furnish, and Operate a New Senior Activity Community Center Facility Approved on January 4th, 2022, to Be Constructed on City-Owned Land, and Present the Action Plan to the City Council for Consideration of Possible Action at August 15th, 2023 City Council Meeting. Councilmember Floris Cale?
All right, thank you. So, first and foremost, I know we discussed this at the Vision Workshop, and so, I went back and did some research to figure out where we stood on this, and what was the last discussion that we had. And then it, that's where I saw the January 4th, 2022 meeting. And so, before we move on into a discussion, I do, I would like to report an update from the city manager on the status of that information from that vote back in January.
So, I have watched that meeting back in January where the discussion took place on that item. My understanding is subsequent to that discussion. The council had other visioning discussions about what they wanted to do with the center, and had directed staff to not proceed with, with coming forward with that kind of agreement. So, that agreement was never brought forward. I know Jerry is here and can provide some additional details if, if he'd like to talk through that, but that's, that's the information that I've gathered from it. I don't have a presentation for you for this item, but that's the information I have.
Okay, was that ever taken in a vote? Were you able to see that vote?
Well, no, I was not. And, you know, for the record, there was no agreement that was voted on, on January either.
No, 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 no. There was no agreement. There was a direction to come back with an agreement. So, I guess I'm just wondering where that.
Councilmember, if I may, Jerry Hendricks, Assistant City Manager. Before we could bring that agreement back, the funding for that agreement had to be fully in place. By the time the funding for that agreement was in place, we had already begun discussions about other opportunities for a senior center, as well as the, the location that had been previously decided to try to put one was not going to be a viable, viable location. So, the, the question is, or the, the work that was done was, was at risk until a contract was approved. If we want to pay for the work that's been done, then we'll be paying for work for a building that probably won't be built. So, if the council wants to direct us to come forward with the contract matching that invoice, we can do that. But we were wanting to skip further direction on what our final destination for a senior center is going to be before we made any further moves.
Right, that viable location that you're talking about, is that the location behind the school?
It's Limeburger Lake, yes, ma'am.
Okay, and what makes it not viable?
The availability of utilities and access to the roadway, as well as it's very small and parking at that location would be problematic.
I just have a quick question, just to make sure.
Well, hang on. I want to make Councilmember Floris Cale's.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Yeah, I'm going to do this to you, by the way, if you interrupt folks, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
No, you're good.
Go ahead.
You're good. I'm just writing down notes.
So, there is no agreement?
There's no agreement.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, but that was never decided on, on council, correct? This is what I want to do. I need, I need to say out loud so everybody understands where we're at, because I think even council's a little bit confused where we're at. No, there is no agreement. Yes, there was supposed to be agreement, but somewhere along the way, council directed staff, not on the dais, but maybe in a vision workshop, which I think we've discussed is not a real, is that's not real direction. Direction always has to come from the dais collectively. And we got to give the residents a chance to respond and, and speak up and tell us what their, their vision is. And so, I find it hard to say this is what we've chosen to do, when we haven't done it openly, so everybody's on the same page. So, if that's what you're telling me, if I can, if I can repeat and understand this correctly, there was a vote to say yes, bring back an agreement, and then in discussions, it was, council said go a different direction, and so, then nothing was ever followed up on Agenda Item 25. Well, you know, the, the bring back an agreement, because we can't just leave it out there hanging. I think at some point, as a council, we need to come back and say yes or no. And so, that way, we don't, I mean, I'm sure the seniors were interested in where we're at as well. They, they seem to be equally confused.
Your point's well taken, Council- Your point's well taken, councilmember. And I meet regularly with the seniors. We talk about their plans for a new building, our hopes to facilitate that for them, as well as that particular work that's been done.
Councilor Heiser.
Thank you. To you, I'm trying to understand here the difference in this agenda item discussion and possible action, number 26, versus what we had decided to do at the end of the vision workshop, which is detailed in the city manager's report. Because, yes, I will agree with you, there are not, there's not a complete list of details. There's a framework under which we, we discussed what, what our options could be, which is exactly what number 26 is asking for. It's, to me, if we vote yes on 26, you're, we're achieving the same outcome, which is already detailed in the city manager's report that went out to the public. So it seems like an exercise of utility here to approve 26 when it's already been made public that what you're asking for is, is happening as we speak, to then come to us to give us the opportunity to say yes or no, to go to CAS and talk to them and get their feedback before we do that. Because we don't have any details outside of what you are, you have been privy to. So.
I'm not unders, what does privy mean? Like, what do you?
Well, the discussion that we had in the vision workshop, which we are free to discuss with them now, tomorrow, after the meeting, or next Tuesday.
Which is what number 26 is for, actually. So a discussion at a vision workshop is not the same as a vote from the dais. That's the difference. I know you say it's an exercise of utility.
If I can interrupt, the audience is requesting to be spoken into the microphone because they can't hear.
Okay, sorry. No, my.
For everybody on the dais.
All right. And we can go back and forth a little bit. So, but I'm gonna let others jump in also. So, Councilmember, Mayor Protim.
Okay. So going back to the original question now that I have about the location, because the location was Limeburger Lake from the beginning, correct? Well, that was the area? So now, I guess my question is, is now why is it not a suitable spot, even if we were trying to maybe possibly look at that location? Now we're going back and saying the parking, the traffic, the utilities, the water. I thought this was all decided on or as a possible location from the beginning that, that could have worked out. So now we're backtracking just on that specific point? Because now that may be looking like that, that's not an ideal location for that specific discussion.
That's correct. And in retrospect, probably should have brought it back to council, but the council also did start discussing other possibilities for a, for a senior center, as well as other, other facilities and amenities. And, and I believe discussions in last year's visioning center also centered around this topic. So, and that's how we've been proceeding, is that we were going to explore another option. The Limeburger Lake presented a lot of obstacles that would have really driven the price up.
Okay. So I guess if we found that out back then, that may have been why a lot of the seniors may being still had assumed that that was going to be the original location. So now it's, now they're getting word today, as we're bringing these items up, that even if we were to go with the location there, or with the visions of us possibly adding other features to the center, that that's not going to be an ideal location to begin with from the beginning. So I just feel that, in that sense there, why it took so long for us to now bring to the seniors that that location now is not going to work after all? That, whether we put, I'm just going to throw this out there, whether we put a, a library out there, or a senior citizens, or an activity center, we're now finding out that that location by, I guess, Tobias Elementary School is not going to be as suitable for any of that. Should we just throw that out there as well? If we were looking to use that location for any kind of city facility, so are we saying that that's not going to be feasible of a location?
Mayor Protim, if I, if I could, we're not prepared to go through the engineering and easements and all these, of the sites. We can certainly do that. If the council requests us to bring some information back, we can do it, show you the layouts and provide that. I think, I think that's the best of the staff's recollection, that it didn't, it didn't work at the time. But we can bring those back. If you want to move in a different direction, we certainly can and bring you those options. But I don't think we're prepared to do that with this item. This was item was asked for by Flores, Councilmember Flores Cale. And so we did not prepare a detailed analysis of the site to answer your question, sir.
Well, that, that brings the point. It's like we've been talking about this same location for the past two to three years now. And now these seniors, obviously, are shaking their head and saying, oh, by the way, this is not going to work out after all. We're going to have to come back and really do a study on it. It's like, we've been telling them the whole time that this is where the spot would eventually possibly go. And now we're backtracking, saying, oh, by, never mind, that was, we still got to do a lot of analysis and testing of the land and testing of the water and seeing if we can actually run a water hose through there and electrical cord. I, I just don't think it's fair for them to hear that now. Even if it was a site that was not suitable, it's like this got, this has to be brought to them from the beginning. Because obviously, it looks like now that this area by the lake, that they probably had wonderful ideas and visions about bringing the center here and having the view of the lake, and also by the elementary school. I heard people say that they could see the children and be nearby. Now it's not going to even work out as far as the infrastructure itself. So now it's like, that, that location is just basically off the table now. I just don't think it's fair for them to hear that.
Councilor Parsley.
Thank you. I'm just trying to understand the whole thing together and what the discussion that we had during the visioning workshop. And my understanding of the direction we gave, I remember sitting on that table, trying to keep the conversation on track and right next to Brian, saying, what is the direction we're going to give staff? My recollection, according to my notes, is that we told staff to please put ideas together for possible locations, and maybe hiring a company to have a draft for a possible center to house CAS, possibly library, possibly museum. That was the idea that I left the visioning workshop with. It's something that we may have shared with some of the CAS members, that, that will, it will be something that we might have to bring for the 2024 November, something like that. I believe that's what we all agree to do. So I, I just don't understand how we are bringing this forward. And then, so what happened last weekend? Did we just, like, gonna toss everything to the air? We asked staff to bring a list of locations that we can possibly house this building, and to make a draft or bring ideas for a draft. So is it that, or are we just gonna change? I mean, obviously, nothing came back to us from this agreement that we did in 2022. And as far as I'm concerned, the one direction we gave to our new city manager and staff was to bring ideas forward. And actually, it's in the report, it said that we're gonna probably do a workshop for this. So what are we doing with these items, 25 and 26? I just don't understand. I mean, we already told Brian, and he's gonna bring something to us. Are we just gonna put him on a bind right now and force him to do something? I'm trying to understand if this is like, I just don't understand why this item is even on the agenda after we just had this discussion.
So, did you want to say anything to that, Brian?
Well, I, I think that's the, the direction that we all believe we received, is that we would look at a joint facility. That was the direction for the visioning workshop, to have a recreation center, library, and senior center combination of uses that could be in a building. And we can bring you back concepts with that. But that was the direction that Stafford received, that we believe we received from the visioning workshop.
Yeah, it's the one that I have noted right here. And I took notes of everything we discussed.
Yeah. So I, I don't necessarily like having these conversations in this kind of a public setting, because it's clear that we do not have a fully baked and well-thought-out plan for how to bring about a senior center. That was the problem in January 4th, 2022. It was a problem before. We're having lots of conversations with the seniors. We're having a strong desire to accommodate the, the senior plans for a center. But we have yet to identify funding for how to bring such a project to life. The biggest financial mistake that the city has made, I've brought this up many times through the years, and it happened a good, a while ago, was the city of Kyle spent 1.4 million dollars on architectural plans for a recreation center that was cash-funded, money we took from the taxpayers, without having the commitment and resolve to actually fund and construct the facility itself. And so this senior center conversation that we've had for a long time, in my opinion, has been snakebit, because we've had conversations and saying things to folks about what we want to do, and trying to get folks to be excited about that, without actually being able to provide the A to Z roadmap, beginning to end, this is how we actually get a key to put in the door and open up a facility that accommodates for those needs. The conversation that we had at the visioning workshop was about putting together a plan and a timeline and a sequence for how we can actually construct a facility. Part of that time, part of that plan that was discussed and put in the report says that the facility that we would have to construct would have to be bonded. And the, the cities are prohibited from issuing CO bonds, meaning vote, council authorized debt, without first asking for the voters to approve, which is a GO bond. And the reality of the situation is, for us to go to the entire city and put forward a bond proposition to ask for a senior center, carries some amount of risk that it may not be approved. So what we have to do is figure out what is our bonding capacity, what are our, what are our needs, where would such a facility be located, and then find the resolve to move forward with a bond election to actually fund the construction of such a facility. One of the challenges with that is that senior center is not the only thing that the city council has expressed repeated desires to construct as amenities for the community. A senior center is valuable, a library is valuable, a rec center is valuable, and they all serve different markets or, you know, citizens within our community. So the discussion that took place at the visioning workshop was to start to cultivate a location and a scope for what we are actually willing to fund, not just to pay for plans that we don't have funding identified to construct. Because what, that doesn't get anybody anything. It pays an architect and an engineer, but it delivers no money. The 1.4 million dollars that we spent on those plans back in 2014 could have been spent in any other way that we could have spent them, would have been better than the way that we spent them. It was a complete waste of funds. So that's been the challenge I've had with this idea of let's go pay for architectural renderings when the, the site is not necessarily viable, but more, more importantly, the city has not made a public commitment to support the funding of the construction of the facility that is being designed. That is a recipe for disaster. And so the council has, has expressed at the vision workshop, a commitment to start to put those plans in motion, to put together a community center that involves, that incorporates a library, recreation, and senior center aspect to it. But we have, we have work to do in order to make that happen, which is what, it was in the city manager's report, that workshops will be forthcoming. And, and, and that's just the, that's just the reality of where we are at. We can give direction with date certainties, but it is going to take more time and more discussion from the council level for staff to feel confident in the direction that we have. Because these kinds of projects, as someone who has presided over the design, development, funding, and construction of multiple projects, they take years. And this, this body can change over. And what you don't want to have happen is you start down a path, spend significant resources, and then you lose political will because you didn't think it through from the very beginning. So, you know, we have, we have work to do. This body has work to do. We can't just kick it to staff and say, go solve this problem for us, because it's not a staff problem. It's a political will issue. We need to have a good plan in place, and then we need to get committed to that plan and actually deliver it. And I think we have the formation of one that was discussed at the visioning workshop. But that formation of a plan is just that, a formation. No promises can be made until this body can get behind such a plan. Councilor Heiser.
Yeah. I just, given everything that's been said in regards to the location that was discussed in January of 2022, I would like to apologize to you all out there for not being more communicative in terms of what the status was of the location. Because it seems here tonight that it, we learned at some point in time that it wasn't, or may or may not be viable, we don't know. And clearly, a ball was dropped. And, you know, I, I can, I want to say on behalf of everyone here that, you know, we will work to do better in terms of communicating with you all, you know, the steps along the way. You know, and I feel, I walked away from the visioning workshop feeling pretty confident that we, as, as a body here, we're in agreement in the commitment to building this facility. And as the mayor pointed out, and, and I think it's, unfortunately, it's a sad reality is we have to figure out how to pay for it all. And that is, you know, it, it doesn't matter where it's built right now. We need to figure out where the money is going to come from, and who we're going to collaborate with, in terms of other governing bodies to try to come up with the money, whether it's working with the county, or, you know, bonding out, or both. So, you know, I just want to say that, you know, moving forward, I think this, it's something that we can, we can learn from here. And I'm sorry that it came at the expense of, of, you know, the, the future of a, of a senior center.
Councilor Flor scale.
Thank you. A part of my reason for putting on here is to give an update, because none of them has been given. And although a formation of a plan is a great idea, I'm still confused by anyone who is concerned about a vision workshop discussion, yet they're okay with ignoring a vote. One which required follow-up from staff that never, that council never received, and also providing a reason with no proof that the location is not viable. So for me, it was just a matter of moving forward. I think we should have had this discussion a long time ago. I don't think we should have waited 18 months. I think they would have been, CAS would have been just fine if we would have told them a year ago, guess what? The city doesn't have the money. Sometimes you just have to say that. I don't think it was fair to have them wait another six months or 12 months, and then say, hey, we're really not sure where that funding came from. And I think that was a concern from the get-go, just nobody ever discussed it out loud. So this was just trying to be inclusive of everybody, so we all knew where we stood with this project. They, a lot of people didn't read. It's not the responsibility of the residents to consistently keep up with our, our weekly reports. If they were told something and, and things have changed, it's only right that we go back and update them. That's it.
Councilor Zuniga.
Yes, so on the location and not being viable, I would just like to remind everybody, there is a, there's an elementary school there. So if the infrastructure is already in place for something of that large scale, then I would say it, it has to be a viable location as well. It may not be the right scale of what we're looking for, but that location, the land is already owned by the city. So that's one major cost that we will not have to incur. So I would just say, if wherever we go with our planning and the framework, keep that as a secondary option as well. So don't just bypass it, because it could still be viable.
Yeah. And I, I just want to say for the record that my perspective, and I rewatched that video from January of last year as well, and I made a lot of these comments at, at that meeting as well. I think the location is a red herring. There are multiple viable options in the city of Kyle to locate a senior center. What we gave What we gave staff direction to bring back was a contract for the engineering and design of a 40,000 square foot senior center. We had no ability to deliver the funding for that. And so the issue is not a location. We could put it at Cal Vista Park, we could potentially make it work at Linebarger, but this council wanted to move forward and spend that money. But when you go and build a house, if you do not have the money to build the house, you would not empty your bank account on the, to design the plans that you don't have the money to fund. There have been statements made that, that, that council members would not support a bond election. If we are not willing to bond, the last thing we need to do is spend money on plans for a building. That is repeating the 1.4 million dollar biggest mistake of the last decade in the city of Kyle in terms of wasting money. We can't do that. We have to identify the full, it's the hard truth. It's just the reality of the situation. We have to identify the funding for the construction, commit to that funding, and then get approval for that funding before we design those plans. And that's what the January vote was about. It was about bringing back a contract of 600,000, of which 200,000 is ours. It's like, well, if the city blows 200,000, shame on us. 200,000 is the county's, if the county blows 200,000, shame on them. But we, we don't miss it, because as Brian mentioned earlier, we have a $200 million budget. If, if the Kyle area seniors zone collects money and all of the money they have in the world is $200,000, and they put it on plans for a building that cannot be constructed, oh, it would devastate me. And that was the signal I was alarming back then, and I alarm, I will signal that alarm again now, that while it is a great thing to talk about building a public safety, or building a senior center, it is, there's a difference between having public conversations about doing such a thing and actually committing to deliver it. When you put real dollars in, you have to be willing to commit to complete that project. And so that's what we are working on, and I hope we can deliver that for you. But that's the truth, that's just the truth of where we're at. Mayor Proton.
Okay, this will be my last comments on this. Okay, let's start with today. Right now, the issue is they are in a shared building, correct? They are in a shared building with the city parks department that they need to use. So that's the reality of today, is they are sharing a space. What, what plans right now do we have, or if there's any off-site locations that we can start identifying today of possibly helping them relocate to another facility, another area? I know there was one that I kind of looked at myself, and I found it's, half of the side is, is occupied, but the other is, is completely empty. So let's, let's, let's start with a plan for today. If we were to try to find them a spot to get them away from the Krug Building, if there is this facility in Kyle, and I know there's buildings here, that we can be able to find a spot for them that can still have the amenities they need with the kitchen, the space, the office space, and everything like that, where can we go starting today on that? If, if we are able to help them find another spot, if, if it's the case there?
Mayor Proton, we have money proposed in next year's budget to move all of our parks programs out of that building into an alternative space. That'd be a rented space, but that would allow the seniors to have sole possession of the Krug Building.
Perfect. That's exactly what I wanted to hear.
And you'll see that as part of-
So, so, like I said, I've been out driving around Kyle seniors, and I've been trying to find a building for y'all. Because I know there's buildings out there that are vacant, especially east of Kyle, and they're huge and they're nice, especially one I saw in Dacey that's been vacant for a long time. So myself, I've been driving around the city, trying to find some kind of facility that could be used. But if that's the plan, if we eventually move the Kyle, the Parks Department from the senior centers, at least they can say they've got at least, not temporary, but a temporary permanent home for what their needs are.
Mayor, Mayor Proton, we also are looking at that building that you identified. We haven't been able to gain access to it, to see what's inside. The seniors would like a large room for their dances and meals, as well as a commercial type kitchen and the proper ADA access. But once we get access to that building, we'd be evaluating it as well.
Okay. And it has lots of parking and it has a real nice design? Thank you. I yield.
Councilor Heiser.
Yeah, I just want to say, it was the February 7th agenda where Councilwoman Flor scale suggested discussion, possible action to create a temporary plan to relocate, which we approved. And so it just, based on that time, I can only speak to it when I've been sitting up here and nothing else prior to when I was elected, but it seems like based on that, at least we, we have a trajectory of moving forward in a way that can drive toward an outcome that can be sustained all the way through financing. So, you know, it's, you know, we are, we're trying here to, to at least make good on this promise to, to come up with plans to, to build, build you guys a new home. Anyone else?
All right, next up is Agenda item number 22. Receive a report, hold a discussion, and provide staff direction regarding an ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the city of Kyle, Texas, amending chapter 54 landscaping and screening requirements of the city of Kyle, Texas.
Give me one second, let me pull up my presentation for you today. Okay, today is the second time we're bringing back this ordinance for y'all's review. Where we kind of left off last time was we had our, our first reading on 6/20/23. Staff did incorporate the P and Z recommended changes that were approved by this council on that date. However, there's two items kind of remaining for consideration. Both of those are regarding the use of artificial landscaping. So for clarification, this, this discussion is going to center on two sections of code, one or two areas of code. The first will be what is, qualifies as required landscaping. So if you build a, a building, you have to have a certain percentage of your property that, that is dedicated to landscaping. The second section will discuss additional landscaping, so above and beyond what is required if some, if a developer wants to go kind of the extra mile. So currently, the current code does not allow artificial landscaping in areas that are required. So if you have to have 1,000 square feet of landscaping, this code does not allow that. It is, it is prohibited. Now, the current code does allow for alternate landscaping, but it does not specifically mention artificial plants and grass. This is more of a variance to the code. It speaks specifically regarding hardships to the property, whether you're on a chunk of dolomite or through the topography or some other measure. So it does allow them to utilize other forms of landscaping, but it does, again, does not specifically allow turf. So it can be aggregate, brick, pavers, other types of, of material. So what we've done is, looking at the current code, again, prohibits artificial landscaping. What we're proposing for you and what we're bringing back tonight is to allow a maximum of 10% of required landscaping to be artificial and lifelike, because that was one of the directions we wanted to make sure we're using high quality turf. And we actually have some examples of some of that turf there in the corner if you'd like to look at it. Those are the higher end products that you see versus the kind of carpet type stuff. Now, this code is proposing to allow additional or excess areas that are putting in landscaping to be utilized artificial turf. So again, this is above and beyond what is required. Now, this will provide clarification regarding the current codes on, on what alternating, alternate landscaping regulations are. Again, that's the kind of the variance section. And then additional artificial landscaping does not need to be lifelike. So if you're using this on what's required, or if you're using turf on what's required, you would utilize this. If it's excess area not required, we would propose to allow them to use the, the carpet type material that you see.
Okay, Jason, so, so say it again. The code tonight would allow for this in the landscaped areas?
Yes, what you have in front of you in the required landscaped areas would allow-
Is allowed.
Yes.
But I thought at the last meeting, it was not allowed.
No, well, we're proposing to allow this, sorry.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Does anybody have any questions related to on this item? Councilor Parsley.
So is there a reason why we are only doing max 10%?
It was kind of a good starting point. So let me show you kind of an example of, of why we kind of chose that. So this is a, an existing site. They have a site plan. So this area is 37,000 square feet. Their required landscaping on this is 3,700 square feet. So that's, that's what they have in green. So that is what's required. 10% of that would be 374 square feet. So you can see it's kind of a, a good chunk. Staff did have some concerns of, of starting out at 50. That, that's a big chunk. Again, we're, we're looking for, for nice decoration, good landscaping, but we did want to allow some areas that may be under a tree, under an oak tree, something that would, you know, just grass isn't growing, it's muddy, this would kind of solve that problem. Additionally, most, most developers do install excess of landscaping. So you'll can see on this image, there's an additional 6,000 square feet that they were proposing. So this would allow, or the proposed code would allow them to utilize additional turf in those areas. It's just as part of the required screening, that's why we limited it to 10%. So the code we're proposing would allow it used everywhere, it's just where it's required. It needs to be kind of the higher end and it, it needs to be a little bit lower volume.
Okay.
So that was the thought process. If, if this board or if council determines that, hey, maybe we need to increase that, you know, 15, 20%, and staff would be glad to, to make those changes, but as a starting point, we kind of wanted to, we didn't want to go off the deep end, so to speak, and kind of just give carte blanche to, to those developers, so.
I'm, I'm thinking Councilmember Parsley wants to make it a minimum.
Yes, I was, I was thinking we should probably say, you know, max 50%, just because I think it looks better, especially during the summer where we see all just dead grass everywhere. I don't, I don't see why the limit of the 10% only on the required areas. I just-
Councilor Flor scale.
Thank you. Does this affect impervious coverage?
Yes, so any, regardless of where they're using it in required or excess, we would have to take this into account to impervious coverage. So if you flip those over, you'll notice some, some sweep holes or drain holes in those. Depending on the product type, the type you're using, those can be less, they can be more. So something like that's not going to be very pervious. That, that's going to create a lot of sheet flow, it's going to run off. So we'd have to have an engineer, you know, do those calculations and submit those as part of the site plan. So whether it's 10% impervious or 90%, just be depending on the product itself.
Okay, and that may be another reason not to do 50%, because if we allow that, but the impervious coverage doesn't, maybe we can do like, you know, instead of a percentage, up to a certain like impervious coverage allotment instead, so that way you're keeping it all in the same, same level. Because some places you maybe not do 50% because of the impervious coverage, but some places you could probably easily do 45. So I think even at 10% is safe unless you want to change it to, instead of a percentage of previous, impervious coverage, like how it's affected.
Well, and the thing to keep in mind is impervious covers, each site's going to be different, so they're, they're going to have their own parking, they're going to have some things that may affect that. Also to keep in mind is on the excess areas, that if they wanted to put artificial turf in, whether it was the lower grade product or the higher grade product, there'd be no cap on that. So they could install all of those areas. So say most of their, their live landscaping was around the perimeter of the building, they had an interior courtyard, and they wanted all of that artificial, they could come back with a, a lesser type product or that if they chose to, but we wouldn't mandate that.
So when you're, when they're making a proposal for artificial grass, you said that the grass has different levels of, you know-
Permeability, yes.
Permeability, I almost said perv. It's like, what is the word? Perv, permeability. So do you, are you the one who has, do you, do you actually take that into consideration? Like maybe the grass has a rating and then you, it's, it's not just a blanket rule on it's artificial, therefore it's 100% impervious?
No, it, it's totally dependent on each, so what you have here is actually different versions. So this is not the same turf. Each one is completely different. They look very similar, but there are subtle differences, so-
And they're like rated with different amounts of, you know, flow that goes through the grass?
Yes, sir. Each one will have its own standard specifications, so we would look at that, we'd have their engineers sign off, they would have to show it on their site plan. I, I guess the easiest way to, to consider this is we would consider this artificial graph crushed granite gravel. They're, they're, those have different levels of permeability. The developer comes in, may put some here, may put some there, and they may compact it.
Right, but it could be as much as 10, as little as 10% or as much as 100% in terms of the permeability.
Correct. I, I haven't seen any that are 100%. I, I think the highest one I saw was 55, but these products are changing every day.
Right, so that, I guess my point is, as it relates to if we want to see more of this product, they will have the ability to make a decision. If they're up against a, a, a pervious coverage limitation, they can gain impervious coverage by putting in artificial turf that has a higher rate of permeability, absorption rate. And if that's not an issue, maybe then they can have something that has more sheet flow. There's, they have, there's, there's, we're talking about making a law here about the use of a type of grass that has a range. So I'm just saying that the, the permeability is not the only factor. So if we wanted to allow for more, I, I could support allowing for more.
Another question. Councilor Zuniga.
Yes, and are, do we have any enforcement in case it's damaged or faded or torn that they have to replace and maintain?
Yes, so there is a section in the code that speaks to maintenance. We did add some language based on P and Z's recommendation that we discuss color fading, rips, tears. You know, obviously, we don't want to be sending code officers for each little tear. We're hoping that the developers will understand they own a business, it's a trip hazard, it's a fault, they'll fix it on themselves. But if they don't, we, we will enforce that as any other code. We have utilizing code enforcement in the building department.
I also agree with the increase in the percentage allowed.
Well, it's one of like, when you go to Mary Kyle Harson Park, we have a lot of like the artificial grass, and it looks good all the time. I believe that's most of what we have in the green space.
This, this image here is, is from that park, yes.
And so that's why I, I would encourage, you know, new developments that come to put artificial grass. Not only looks good, I, I believe the maintenance is probably easier, it's easier to maintain. I, I would, I would encourage for the usage to not be just capped at 10%.
Do you have a number?
I would say 50%. I mean, if it's up to me, I wouldn't just even give a limit on what they can use.
The, the, they could request a variance and take that to planning and zoning for a landscaping variance to increase that number, or would that be a-
And we are just like tapping, I don't know.
I don't believe so, that they'd have to have some kind of hardship to, and to increase something. I don't, I don't, I can't think of a scenario at this point, but-
Yeah, so it's not a requirement that they put any artificial grass, it's just allowing up to-
Yes.
A number.
Yes, sir.
Look, I would support 50, I really would.
And the thing is, like, it's expensive, so chances are that they're, they may not put it, because I know it's more expensive than, than putting grass, so that's why I was thinking of-
I'm also amenable to a lower number.
Okay, I'm done with 50.
Does anybody have any thoughts on that?
I, I agree with Councilmember Parsley about the usage, because there's times I've driven out there this summer and there's families that are just sitting out there and they're not sitting in with, with their ants and everything else.
Yeah.
If, if it's something to where this is a more modern technology used for parks and it's more eye pleasing and so forth, and it could be safer as well, I, I'm all for, you know, requiring some developers to use that for their landscape. I think if we start off at a basic rate, if we have to go 50%, I would support that because we could always change it. We could always go higher, we could also go lower to where it's like, okay, this is way too much or, or so forth, or it's too costly, expensive for the developers. We, we can always amend these things. But Mayor, if you, and Ms. Parsley, if you are safe with just going with a 50% right now at the half mark, halfway mark, then we can always gauge it. Either we lower it or go up and down. At least we're at that medium.
Jason, was there any other discussion point that you wanted to bring up outside of the artificial grass from our last conversation?
No, I just wanted to make sure y'all were clear on, I know I may have confused y'all on the last meeting on required versus excess and then versus the kind of variance process. So if y'all are good there and don't have any questions for me, I'd be glad to take some direction and so we can bring something back to you for a second read.
This is second reading.
Actually, do you want to answer that?
It's not listed for second, so.
No, sorry.
Uh-oh, what did we do wrong?
Is it on?
Right.
Mayor, Councilmembers, Veronica Rivera, Assistant City Attorney. The agenda item is only for discussion purposes and it is being brought back to you for second reading. The staff was asking for direction at this time, especially because there were items that Jason again discussed with you right now.
Okay, well, our direction was to pass it on first reading for them to bring back a very specific item on second reading. And then we could make a decision on second reading and pass it. There's no need for it to come back a third time. We've resolved the issue. But it's not listed for second reading, therefore it doesn't matter.
Exactly. So because it's not written that way, if there are any action to take place, you are unable to take action tonight.
All right.
So what we were looking for is just direction, the percentages, overall comfort with the idea. And if you can give us, if you're looking for 50%, then we'll draft that in the language and you'll have an action item which your next agenda to do it.
Yeah, all right. We get to do this again.
We'll get you a consent next time.
Yeah, well, we'll see. I'd like to make a motion to give direction to bring back a 50% allowance for artificial grass in the landscape ordinance for second reading at the next meeting.
And just to clarify on the motion, sorry, are y'all good with the other proposed changes? There was some language in there because of the change in technology that gave the director the ability to determine whether qualified for required or not. So if y'all are good with that, then.
Any other discussion? Motion was, I don't know if I said this, motion made by the mayor, seconded by Councilmember Parsley. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, Council.
Motion carries. I wish I had known. I would have tried to get in front of that so that we could have just handled it. It's okay. All right, so now we're back to the top. Next up, we're going to bring up agenda items 14 through 17. First reading, item 14, an ordinance emitting Chapter 53 zoning the city of Kyle, Texas for the purpose of rezoning approximately 3.764 acres from retail services. PUD Central Business District 2 and rezone approximately 23.3 acres from PUD CBD 2 to PUD CBD 2 for property located at 1717 North Burleson. This item has a public hearing. Prove a development agreement, item 15, between the Ward Place Properties LLCs, Sylvester Diaz, Maria Diaz, and the city of Kyle. Agenda item 16, public hearing concerning the creation of Ward Place Public Improvement District pursuant to the provisions of Chapter 372. And agenda item 17, resolution of the City Council of City of Kyle, Texas authorizing creating Ward Place Public Improvement District according to Chapter 372. Mr. Atkinson.
Well, Atkinson, Director of Planning for the Record. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before you, as stated, we have multiple items regarding the Ward Place project. These are all items that are related and altogether for the proposed entitlement of this site for the Ward Place project. On the map, on the screen over there, you can see the approximate location of the site. It is just west of I-35 and a little bit north of the roundabout at Marketplace and North Burleson. It does have existing PUD zoning with the base district of CBD 2. The Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend it on 12/10/2019 unanimously. And City Council voted on the 17th of 2019 unanimous and it passed on for a read. Throughout the pandemic, at least three times, this project went through the Parks Board for a recommendation process to, from the design and dedication proposed for this parkland. It's approximately 13 acres. And the Parks Board is very excited and consequently so is staff. There's going to be a nature trail through the project, a portion of the vibe trail, a fitness court that's been funded through a grant, I do believe, a playscape, and also trailhead parking between North Burleson and I-35. Back in late 2022, in November, on November 15th, y'all, the City Council did endorse this project with a motion to direct staff to bring back a PID TIRS documents and a development agreement as we are able. So this is what's before you at this time. And then last week at the Planning and Zoning Commission, the commission voted to recommend approval of the amended PUD with a 5-0 vote. And just some basic information, it's currently zoned PUD CBD 2. This is a request to expand the boundaries of it by a little over 3 acres. And adjacent to it, you have to the south and a little bit to the north, retail services, R-33, a PUD that was by the Arena Man Group and also Joe Brooks on the west side of Marketplace. And then we have a little bit of agriculture to the south. It does have a base zoning district of CBD 2. It is located in the core area of transition. It is, it's a project that fits in very well with the established zoning that's all the way around it. It's absolutely perfect. We are very excited about it as well. And then from the request to the city, they are asking for a PID with some deviations from the city's PID policy. And I'll bring up Stephanie Libby here in just a moment. They are also asking for a TIRS with county participation, amendment to the PUD zoning, a development agreement, and a parkland dedication. And the development agreement primarily talks about infrastructure, the dedication of the parkland improvements related to that, and also a parking licensing agreement for the improvements of North Burleson as well. And at this time, I'll bring up Stephanie.
Mayor, Councilmembers, Stephanie Libby with Norton Roosevelt Wright, City's Bond Council for the record. As Will mentioned, in connection with the PID petition, the developer is requesting some deviations from the city's PID policy. City's PID policy currently provides for an overall 2.5 to 1 lien-to-value ratio. The developers requested, I think, 2.1. We've gone back with 3.1 on a project-by-project basis. So there are some deviations to there as it relates to maximum maturity for the bonds.
I think you said that's what's back in there, right? We're not asking for 2:1.
I think you originally asked for 2:1. Not under the current proposal, but I was informing council that that was requested by the developer. And what we've come to counsel with is a 3:1 proposal, even though 2.5 to 1 would have been permitted under the PID policy. And so it's actually more stringent than that policy as currently drafted. For the PID bonds, the PID policy contains a 20-year maximum maturity. Developer is requesting 30-year bonds. And then also the PID policy specifies that the city is not obligated to provide any additional fundings beyond the PID bond proceeds. And of course, here the developer is additionally asking for the TIRS. So there would be other city funds that would be applied towards the project in addition to the PID bond proceeds.
And then from a community benefit perspective, of course, you've already mentioned the 13-acre park with the amenities. It'll have approximately a little over 0.6 miles of natural trails within the park, 0.17 miles of the vibe trail, fitness pad, wetlands reconstruction, invasive species removal. They're providing a large emphasis on that. And then the vibe trail segment added for a total, which this includes the park, about just under 0.4 miles. It'll have part of the spine of the vibe trail that's in our network. And it'll help complete a junction in the trail moving south towards the Arena Man project as well. And this project overall from a vibe node will create a small town square for the vibe node. And then we also have trailhead parking. Additional community benefits, rebuilding North Burleson for street parking, street trees, sidewalks, internal street designs for very similar design. They are also going to be constructing within the first phase, two vertical mixed-use buildings, approximately 25,000 square feet of commercial with those. And then additional buildings also on site between the two, those two major buildings of additional 4,000 square feet. And then they will be, they are going to build and hold them at the very beginning. And here, right here, we have a concept plan as well. That gives you a pretty good idea. City park to the right of the creek and the actual development to the west. And the ones in orange are the build and hold, which will be part of the first phase. And some images right here of the Three Sisters, which is up adjacent to the creek with a little town square right there. The Lex and Louise, which is a little bit to the, to the south, around the town square as well. And then just another slide for the amenities with the playground as well. And so at this time, I do believe Mr. Barton also has a presentation. And I will stop sharing and so his staff can also share the slides as well.
Thanks, Mayor, Councilmembers. It's a real pleasure to be here. Again, for the record, my name is Jeff Barton. I'm a property owner and taxpayer here in the city of Kyle, live just across the street from city limits. Got son, children, aunts, mom live in the city limits. We're here to talk about the Word Place. As you heard, you had a great presentation from staff. I've had questions from several of you about some of the specifics and you've asked me to detail those tonight. So I am going to try and provide a little bit more detail and flesh out what you heard from staff. I'll go through that pretty quickly, but I hope it'll give you some information that's helpful to you. Let's see, I'm having a little bit of trouble advancing the slides. One moment. Maybe that's me. It says, there we go. Again, we're aiming the Word Place to really be a destination project. And, you know, in our view, somewhat a game changer for Kyle, certainly for parcels of this size. You saw a moment ago the renderings. This is the bottom line of what it looks like. That was developed over a long period of work with our professional team, but also with help from some of you on the dais. We'll talk more about that later. It's also an economic driver for the city of Kyle, we're pleased to say, adding money, but more importantly perhaps, adding real connection. You heard Will mention it, this critical connection that we as longtime residents understand between east and west Kyle, going underneath the interstate to help provide the first real tangible connection on the vibe trail of those east and west communities. And we believe will bring destination retail to the city as well. A significant nature preserve as well as 13.5 acres of city park, green space throughout the project, and upscale living here within the city. So I want to talk to you briefly about Word Place, how it got to be where it is, and then what we plan for it in the future. You saw the locator map. This is just another view of that from us. You can see I-35 on the right, the RV place, the flea market here in the foreground, and bounded by Burleson and Marketplace Streets. It actually has I-35 frontage, but we don't plan to access that frontage because of floodplain issues. This gives you an idea of the original plan that was approved way back in 2019 on a unanimous vote by the City Council. It included a number of lots north of the creeks as well as south of the creeks. It was a great plan. You guys were very kind when you endorsed it. P&amp;Z also endorsed it unanimously. But subsequently, we really helped to go under construction within about six months of this, way back in 2019. But there, floodplain issues developed. There was new rainfall data that came down from the federal government. Kyle had not yet adopted an Atlas 14 ordinance. But we chose to work cooperatively, proactively with the city before that ordinance was adopted to really address potential floodplain issues in the future on this site. We're going to be part of this project for a long time. We wanted the right thing. We think the climate is changing. So we helped develop flood studies for the city of Kyle and independent outside analysis to confirm those flood studies and reconfigured our concept plan to give up that, those lots on the north side of the creeks to a nature to preserve, to protect potential floodplain, to allow more water to be absorbed, and to really double down on this concept of a trail-oriented design. This shows the vibe trail connecting back across Marketplace. We've been coordinating with our neighbors on that side to make sure the trail connects there. It then comes to the north and will connect to the east-west trail as, as you can see here, and go by the trailhead parking that's off-site from us, something that we're going to do outside of our project, and connect underneath, connect to I-35, where we'll pick up with other trails that are planned by the city. It incorporates environmental features and green spaces throughout the project. Some of this, as you heard your planning director say, is build and hold. So here in the gold, I'm color challenged. I want to call it orange, but I understand it's gold. There's the build and hold that will be held by the family. Central Square Farmhouse that will incorporate the old historic family farmhouse. And then residential, a residential building for some of the current residents of the property, including my mother, who you met earlier. We will have other builders that will be responsible for meeting design guidelines that we're imposing on the property to ensure articulation and the kinds of materials that we've spoken with about the city. That'll be enforced by us and our Property Owners Association. We already have several builders that we're working with who really do very high-quality work. Then in addition, there is this idea of the city park that we're talking about that we've really taken environmental issues and tried to make lemonade out of them with a landmark historic city park. Just to give you an idea, there in the brick and mortar district, it's a beautiful city park being developed about an acre. This is 13 and a half acres, two creeks, one ephemeral, one live year-round. And there are a number of features here. We will have a playground, a destination kind of citywide playground with really unique features, great landscape effort here, active play, nature-oriented play. We also have a fitness court that the city asked us to contribute to the site. It'll be right at the intersection of the vibe trail, outdoor fitness. We've contributed the land and $105,000, $110,000 to meet the match grant. There will be nature trails throughout. As you've heard, the vibe is this great concept that we fully endorse. We've also heard clearly that some members of the community want a more nature-oriented experience. That'll wind through mature trees, forests, and down to the water. And then when we talk about water, I want to be clear, this is shot from the site. So we're not talking about, you know, a dribble, but real water, beautiful water, one of the most iconic spots in Kyle. It was always a dream of my grandmother that this would become a park perhaps one day. So we're glad to help fulfill that. We originally came up with the idea of doing it as a park after showing it to city staff. And city staff requested that we consider it as a park. That was, as you heard from Will, later endorsed by the Parks Board. In addition to that, there's going to be players that includes a labyrinth made out of native grasses so that kids can play in it and their parents can see over the top of the grasses. So really unusual features. And then embracing the natural areas there, we've done what we think no other developer has ever done in Kyle, which is really develop a fully foliage plan for preserving that nature area. As part of the development agreement, we've already produced a natural area management guideline. Part of that we will do upfront with funds from the PID TIRS. Part of that is a guide for the city for long-term maintenance. So it catalogs all the species, plant, animal on the site. We'll have wayfinding along the trail that we'll produce to help educate children and citizens of the community, not only about historic cultural resources there, but about animal and plant life and the creek, which is so critical to both the history and the future of Kyle. Your vibe plan calls for creating themed hubs along the vibe. Ours is a play on the family name word. Over time, we've been very involved in kind of the reading life of Kyle. There've been a number of artists and writers who've lived on the place. So we're embracing the double meaning of word there. And we'll have public art throughout the site that kind of reinforces that idea of a cultural center and a word place with entertainment and amenities. We looked all over the country to really try and understand how you do this right. From the east coast to the west, Minneapolis, two sites that really made an impression on us were Carmel, Indiana. Two sites that really made an impression on us were Carmel, Indiana, that has one of the premier trail-oriented designs in the country. We went up and spent about a week there, talking to everybody from the mayor to the adult directors to actual developers on how they accomplish that. And then in Texas, I don't think that's been done better anywhere than Addison. We, I think some of you now have been to Addison, are, are, both on the private side of our development team and people who were in public office at the time, helped develop Addison Circle, one of the premier sites in Texas for this, and Vitruvian Park there in Addison. So a great example of mixed use and the kind of quality that we hope to bring to this project. Both those were heavily catalyzed by public investment. We understand we're in a different place in this part of Texas. We are asking for partnership, but not the same kind of catalytic investment that was, that was issued there. Some of you will remember this, I think councilman partially you'll remember it, this was the original design that we came to you. We, we really liked it pretty well. We, we heard loud and clear that some of you had questions about it and asked us to go back to the drawing table, really come up with a design that reflected your vision of Kyle. We, we contracted our architects to go back to that drawing board and really change that design. Here you can see, again, another shot of what it was and what it's become, smoothing out some of that rock, changing to a different rock face, so you've got a smoother, more sophisticated texture in some ways, changing the color palette, the materials palette, bringing that up to a second floor. We heard from you last November that you really appreciated the changes. Thank you for that. We, we think you've helped make it a better product. Here are some other views of that, you saw them quickly from Will. This is looking down the plaza that we call the Bonton towards the park itself, an area that you can have farmers markets, can have gatherings, movies in the park, and music. Here is that central square in a larger view, out of the plaza between the Lex and the Louise buildings, and in the background, the historic farmhouse that forms the basis of the central square. A quick view of the elevations to give you a sense of how this breaks out and how the buildings might be programmed. On the Three Sisters building, named after my mom and her two sisters, we have fine dining on the ground floor, bar and pool on that second floor, which is unlike anything we have in Kyle today, reached by an elevator, and then offices stacked on top of that with residential on the other half, on the other half of the building. So true vertical and horizontal mixed use throughout the project. We've also talked to replica builders across the state, and really have got a lot of exciting interest from people who've done walkable, new urbanist-type communities. This is inspirational design from what one of our builders is looking at on the off-site projects, another sense of what it can be. Again, we're, we're really happy with where the design has gone over time, and time is a key word. It took a long time for this project to mature. We started on it in 2017, we began negotiations with the city in earnest in 2018, we got our first approvals from you all in 2019. In 2021, we were finished and ready to go to market, and we were asked by the city to really double down on this brand-new concept of a vibe trail and think about incorporating trail-oriented design. We had always had a walkable, trail-oriented community, but we went to redesign again, really incorporated the vibe trail, really embraced that idea, went to Carmel, and added some density really like where that took the project. It, it did delay us a little bit, we think in the end that's going to be worth it. We went to Parks Board several times during those periods to make sure that what we, the vision we had was in concert with what your boards had, and over and over again, got unanimous approval, and as you heard Will say, excitement for the Parks Board, something we really appreciate. Along the way, we had more than 60 meetings with staff as we worked out details of this agreement, and then we're back to city council last year, first hoping to get approval in the summer and fall of last year, got some good advice from the dais on how to improve the project, came back in November and got unanimous support for moving forward along this, this path, and last week, as you heard, unanimous approval from the Planning and Zoning Commission. Along the way, we've had the opportunity to do a lot of studies and bring this project farther than a lot of projects that might be at this stage of development. Flood studies that help identify safeguards, not only on this site, but in extended areas downstream and upstream, now used as the standard for the city. Again, we paid for those and paid for a third-party review to ensure their accuracy and accountability. We've done this natural areas assessment that really wasn't due until the end of the project, but we wanted to incorporate that into the planning from the very beginning, an environmental component, environmental basis right from the beginning. How do you restore the creeks to their natural splendor? How do you control invasive species? How do you manage water across the site in ways that doesn't just aggregate it and concentrate it and create erosion problems, but how do you take pollutants out of it in natural ways, through rain gardens and that sort of thing as we go? And then studies on extensive pedestrian walkability, transportation, connectivity of the trail system, working actually with your trail consultants to flesh out where a vibe and how it can work across the city, as well as PID and economic analysis. Speaking of the environmental system, so it's got LID features, low-impact design throughout, so it really is, I, I think helps set a new standard for green infrastructure in the city, unusual infrastructure in that rather than, again, congregating everything in underground storm sewer, wherever possible, we run this through daylighted systems, that helps visitors understand the connection of water and the connection of this place to the creeks are there. You know, the water, water is part of our natural environment, we need children to understand that, we need our citizens to understand that, but beyond that, it helps take pollutants out of the stream and allows us to use natural irrigation on the project throughout. We've also done wildlife studies that are not required by either the city or the federal government to understand wildlife that's on the site and how we protect them as the project moves forward, and how the city can protect them and manage them long-term. Love free to see that whole document if you haven't seen that already. Again, just to reiterate, we've touched on the beginning, all of this comes with a, a good ROI for the city of Kyle, return on investment and economic development for the city that far outweighs investment, jobs, labor income, and annual tax dollars. We were at your P&amp;Z just recently, and they really did their due diligence, just as your staff has asked lots of questions, about 20 questions asked by P&amp;Z, a long conversation, and at the end of that, I think we've handed out some comments that you can see, but I'll just summarize it here, unanimous approval, and we were really pleased, also praise from the P&amp;Z, saying that this was a model project that they hope will be replicated in the future in the city of Kyle. So we think that kind of success comes because we've worked hard to, to get buy-in from surrounding neighbors, 100% approval of the residents with inside the PID, the word, and DA's families. We've time and time again recalibrated our plans to meet a changing Kyle, and volunteered to go above and beyond what was required by law or city code. We were really happy that when we met in November, 76 residents of Kyle showed up to sign in in support of the project. You may remember, zero signed in opposed, and I think that's unusual for development projects. So we're here tonight to ask for the development agreement that includes the public improvement district and the tax, ultimately will include a tax reinvestment zone. You know, if you're old like I am, it's easy to be caught up in the nostalgia of the past, and that's particularly true if you understand the nooks and crannies of the city's past the way I've come to, because my family goes back here many generations. My, we were lucky enough for you guys to decide to name your lifetime citizen achievement award for the city of Kyle after my father, for his work in civil rights and on the city charter and other, do gooder projects in the city over the years. My mom volunteered as the chair of the library board and a number of nonprofits and helped secure the Catherine Anne Porter Building for posterity and as a legacy for the city of Kyle. My grandmother helped found the first library in the city of Kyle. My grandfather came back from fighting in World War I, and right where I'm standing today, founded a general store for the city of Kyle.
Right where we're sitting, by the way.
One of my heroes, and you see that some of the buildings are named after Lex and Louise, my grandfather and grandmother, we've been a close family, but we're not here tonight to be a part of Kyle's past. We want to be an active part of Kyle's future. We have poured everything we have into this project, love, treasure, passion, creativity, time, second mortgages on the house, you name it. We've seen a lot of change, but we still believe in Kyle and we believe in its future. We hope we can be partners in that future together. Thank you very much. Glad to answer your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Barton. This item has a public hearing, so if there are no objections, I'm going to open up the public hearing. Seeing none, agenda item number 14's public hearing is now open. Is there anyone who wishes to come forward and speak? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Public hearing is now closed. Does anybody have any questions, comments, or motions? Councilmember Partially.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much for answering the questions today, Mr. Barton, when I gave you a call. Well, how much of a change will take place if workplace were to abide by the new landscaping ordinance? Are there any like major changes that he would have to work on?
I, I think the answer is generally no, because what they are proposing goes far above and beyond anything that they proposed landscape code, actually.
Okay.
The amendment that we're proposing is going to require.
So I know Mr. Barton said that he has worked on other things besides, because I was trying to see if maybe a rainwater system or something like that would work out for his little man. He is doing different things for water conservation. The only thing I would say is like I would encourage some of the use of turf that we just discussed, just, you know, and maybe in some of the common areas, just for water conservation. I appreciate all the changes you did in the past to bring this to the standards that you did, I'm really happy. So I was just wondering if there is anything, like if he were to want to put some turf, since we haven't approved the ordinance, that he would be allowed to do that?
The answer is probably yes. I'm, I'm making an assumption that at the upcoming meeting that y'all are going to end up approving that. So if that is the case, then we can coordinate with them with plans that they subsequently submit to make that happen.
Okay. Now is it for me?
Councilmember Floris Gale.
Thank you. I'm just wondering why the 3.764 acres were not included in the original rezone?
And I may have to bring up Jeff for that, but I believe they weren't under contract at that time, but he can provide more details.
Yes, councilmember, we actually spoke to that at those meetings, both before P&amp;Z and city, and said that we anticipated or hoped to be able to bring those in, but as Will said, those weren't fully under control at that time. While this is all family land, and actually that was family land that we're buying back at a considerably higher price, we didn't control it at the time. So we spoke to it in those meetings, said that that would be a goal, but that we couldn't guarantee it. We were able to accomplish that and it's now part of the project.
Okay, so my next question is going to be for whoever drafted the DA. All right, in the DA, the property is defined as approximately 26.9 acre tract, and then it says legally described in Exhibit A. Does this approximate acreage include the seven, 3.764 acres?
I'll let, I'll let the council, I'll let the planning answer, and I believe the answer is yes.
Yes, the, the original boundaries are the boundaries that they currently are with the zoning, is approximately 23 acres and change, and then adding the additional acreage will bring it up to the 26, 27 approximate acres.
Okay, just for future DAs, I really am not comfortable seeing a number in there that's not yet been voted on. Again, for transparency reasons, it doesn't look, it looks like we've already made a decision. Looks like this has already been voted on. You could have left that empty space, or you could have, you know, done something, but it makes me really uncomfortable to vote yes on something that you guys have already decided.
Fair enough.
Because the DA gets voted on after this.
I think, really, the, the intent here is to bring you all of the items at one time so you can see them all together, so they're all being presented at the same time, including the DA and the, and the rezoning, so you'd see it all together. But I understand your point, but we're trying to show you the entire deal and all of the items as they're, as they're contemplated.
Okay, so my question would be, what if it was not approved?
If it was not approved, then there would be a motion by council. We would direct y'all to please provide a motion that included then a change to the DA, and then we would make that change.
Okay, so that is exactly what I want to see, but in the opposite way. We can make an amendment to include the 3.7 acres? So for me, it just looks more clear and a little more transparent that we haven't yet decided on that, and so we could always amend it to add it, but for me, it just makes me uncomfortable knowing that this has already been drafted with this, this, this amount already in the development agreement.
And just for clarification, then, when we're, because DAs, normally when we draft DAs, we always include the legal description and we include the property. If there is a zoning amendment or, or zoning that's coming with it, that's when you would like to not see inclusion of the acreage in the DA, because any other time, you would like to see the legal description and the property described.
Right, the legal description, I understand, and if we want to include that, amend to include the 3.764, whatever it is, then I'm okay with that, because I don't know how much of a difference that would make. All I'm trying to say is, as a resident that's seen things that you can speculate, I don't think any of us really have done, I don't think this is an issue, but I'm just trying to be open and transparent for the residents, that we don't put in numbers that haven't been approved, because obviously this DA was drafted weeks ago.
Right, and it's, it, it has not been approved. Again, we're, any term within the DA, you, it's, your purview to direct staff and legal to make those changes as part of your motion.
Yep, agreed. So that's why I'm saying we can always change it the other way. We can always include or add it after the vote's taken. That is my only ask.
Councilmember Floris Gale, if I may ask for a clarification question, or maybe more clarification from our side, I just want to make sure I'm understanding. So the, both the zoning request to increase the boundaries to just under 27 acres matches the approximate acreage that's in the development agreement. I don't know if that helps clarify the, that or not.
So that, that's why I asked, is the 3.764 included in the 29 that's already written into the DA? And she said yes.
It's 20, it's 27 acres, and they, they match the zoning as well.
Right, but what I'm saying is we haven't voted on that yet.
Correct.
So I'm going to just jump in, if you remember at our last meeting, the reason that we did not approve the zoning at that time, and we kicked it back and made them come back, was so that we could line up the zoning and the development agreement together, so that we didn't have the, exactly what you're worried about happening, happening, which is why also you brought up the geniatives 14 through 17 simultaneously, so that we wouldn't run the risk of voting in a development agreement that compels a zoning and then not approving a zoning. So it's not about transparency, it's about synchronizing the decision so that everything either passes as a, as a combined packaged unit, or it doesn't pass, which is the up-down vote that's before us.
So I guess my only concern would be like, what if we didn't do the, if we don't approve this, then is the rest, is, if we don't approve 14, is 15 and 16 no, no good to us in 17?
We should vote on it all at, as once, because it's a PID, a TERS, and a zoning, and then a development agreement that, that contemplates all three of those things. So if you're approving the development agreement and then not approving the zoning, the TERS, and the PID, then you're in violation of the development agreement that you just approved, which is why you don't string the votes out, which is why the developers had kind of a conniption fit at the last meeting when we said we're not going to move forward stringing out these votes, we're going to make sure that we literally don't. I don't know another way to accomplish this other than... I don't know another way to accomplish this other than putting them all on the same agenda, bringing them all up together, and then taking a vote on the entire package deal at once. So if the vote on Items 14 through 17 fails, then it all fails, and if it passes, then it all passes. I absolutely think that if you, if you want to vote for a piece of it and not the other piece, then you're, then that's a legal liability, because the contract.
That's probably something we should know then, before, I mean, because when I look at this, I look at the zoning, and then I look at the TERs, and I look at the PID, and I look to see if they all are justifiable. So I'm not, I don't just vote on one thing. I don't look at this and say, "I like it all," because there are some things in this that I think need to be changed. So I get what you're saying, and I get where you're coming from, is like, looking at it, if you agree to all of it, it makes sense, but if you're like me and you look at things individually, I, I'm a little uncomfortable saying, "Oh, yeah, they've already got it in here for the whole full amount that we haven't even voted on yet."
Right, but the request before us is for the development agreement. That's what we need to focus on first.
Oh, I thought the first one we were talking about was 14, which is the rezone.
No, I read them all out at the same time. They're all before us simultaneously. 14 came first because it had a public hearing, but we're discussing 14, 15, 16, and 17 at once. So we're talking about the PID, the TERs, the zoning, and the development agreement, because the development agreement, as you've pointed out, has the language that compels us to create these, to give them the zoning and create the special districts. So if you don't want to do the PID, then, then, or the TERs, then this is the place to argue for it, but what we shouldn't do is actually have the outcome of the vote be that we approve the development agreement and then don't approve, that has the PID in it, and then don't. So you have the ability to argue whatever case you want to argue now while it's all before us.
Okay.
We would like for council to vote on Action Item 14 separately, because if it doesn't pass unanimously, it's subject to a two-reading requirement, where all the other action items are effective upon adoption. And so if.
How does voting on them separately change the outcome? If it's not unanimous and 14's not finally passed, it has to come back for second reading.
14 would have to, but the others would not.
But if we vote on it separately, it's still going to be the same outcome. You're saying if.
You vote on 14 first, and if it doesn't pass unanimously, then everything else will get delayed until 14's second reading. So again, we can honor council's wishes of everything.
The way we've done it is, I understand what you're saying, but the way we've done it in the past is we've just approved 15 through 17, subject to final approval on 14, because there's nothing that we can do if it doesn't finally pass the zoning to prevent bringing it back for a second reading.
So for the PID creation resolution, there's a requirement that we file that creation resolution with the county within seven days of City Council adoption. And so adopting it subject to a future action creates some issues with us complying with that statutory requirement.
All right, well, let's see how the discussion plays out. I understand your request. Further comments? Mayor Protem.
All right. Thank you, Barton family, for bringing this forward. I know you've been working on this for a long time, and thank you, Ms. Barton, for our conversation today as well. Also to the Parks Board for all your hard work on this, Ms. Stark and everybody. I know you've been working on this for a long time. I'm excited about this. You brought up Addison, and you brought up the other cities. We were just recently there, and I remember when we were coming back from one of the evenings, Councilmember Bradshaw wanted to show me a specific, unique design on the buildings, and that was awesome, with the colors of the brick, you know, being red and the archways and so forth. So it was pretty neat, and then also the sculpture itself. So it's kind of pretty neat to kind of just see that, and then maybe wanted to bring some kind of design like that to the city. So if that's the case, Mayor, if we're going to just go with the approval of the first reading, should we go ahead and make a motion to approve Agenda Item Number 14? We're going to do this together.
The zoning is something you support, 14?
Yes.
All right, I agree. 14.
All right, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to approve Agenda Item Number 14.
Second.
All right, motion to approve Agenda Item 14, it's seconded by Mayor Protem, seconded by Councilmember Flores-Cale. Is there discussion on this motion? All who are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. I'll wait to finally pass it. Now we'll go on to 15 through 17.
All right, okay. With that, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to approve Items, Agenda Items Number 15.
Mayor.
Yes.
Veronica Arribas, Assistant City Attorney. We do need to have the public hearing for the PID, which is.
We had that open, didn't we?
You had it for zoning.
Ah, I see now. Yeah, so we're not approving Items 16. So hang on one second.
No problem.
I, so Agenda, I'm going to bring up Agenda Item 16 separately, public hearing concerning the creation of the Worth Place Public Improvement District. Is there any objection to open this public hearing? Seeing none, the public hearing is now open. Is there anyone who wishes to come forward and speak? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Public hearing is now closed, so the items are 15 and 17.
Mayor, with that, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to approve Agenda Item Number 15 and Agenda Item Number 17.
15.
16.
That's it. Motion by Mayor Protem, seconded by Mayor, that we approve Agenda Items 15 and 17. That's the development agreement and the creation of the Public Improvement District. Is there discussion on that motion? Councilmember, Councilmember Zuniga.
Yes, I had a question for Stephanie as well, just to get more information about the 20 years of the PID and the 30 years. What financially will that do for the PID creation? If we bond out 30 years versus 20?
I mean, providing for a 30-year bond as opposed to a 20-year bond would provide for additional bond proceeds that would be available for the project. With public improvement districts, the special assessments are levied in direct correlation to the benefits that are provided to the land, and so with additional bond proceeds, you have additional public improvements that can be constructed. If you go with a 20-year maturity, you have less bond proceeds available, and then you get less public improvements from the district itself. So that would be less funds available for some of the park improvements, for some of the street scape and kind of open space community centers that were provided in tonight's presentation.
So then for Mr. Barton, is the 30-year runway essential? Is it all necessary, sir, to complete this really great project you have here?
Thank you, councilmember. Thanks for the question. It is. We originally were hoping to have a PID that was funded upfront, and through a lot of negotiation with your staff, and the staff really wanting to protect the city's interests, we've agreed to reimbursable PID. That carries a lot more expense, so a lot of that PID money is going to be used to pay for some issuance costs that have to do with this reimbursable expense, and for some really considerable amount of additional interest that'll be involved that way, because we're paying for it upfront, putting the improvements in the ground, and then coming back to the city where you can verify those improvements have happened before we getting the money instead of getting it upfront, which is the way it often happens with a PID. We understand the city's perspective on that. It wasn't our first choice, but you've got good negotiators representing you, and because of that, and because we're going above the 2.5 up to 3, so we're going above the basic city standards, we really need that 30-year to make it work.
Is the longer the term better for the city? I got that question.
Is the longer bond maturity better for the city? I think it's just a different perspective, right? I mean, I think the 20-year maturity is, or a 20-year maximum maturity is something that's in the city's PID policy, but that PID policy was adopted, you know, and last amended in 2017, and I think it's fair to say in 2017, a 20-year maturity was kind of market standard for PID bonds. Come up to today, we do see kind of more standard 25, 30-year maturities with PID bonds, so it's something that's accepted by the market. I think it works for this project, both from a development standard, and then again, with some of the additional community amenities that the PID's going to provide to the city.
Sure. And then the other question for Will, the setbacks, help me understand the zero setbacks that were, I guess, the changes requested.
Yes, so the base zoning district is CBD 2, which is what you have here around the square, and this building is CBD 2. And so, given that this is urban, small-town center kind of feel, with the ultimate outcome is going to be something similar to downtown from a built environment, we wanted to be able to allow it to maximize those lots and the usage, just like you'd see downtown. Does that make sense?
So they don't have to build within a certain distance of the roadway?
Correct. They can build up to it, but within that, with their streetscapes and the associated parklets and green spaces and all that, all combined as a master plan project, the open spaces that we normally have in the front lawn, you see in a normal suburban setting, you don't need those because you have these centralized gathering spaces that have a more robust economic effect and just a better place to be for festivals and what have you.
And I just wanted to make comments to Mr. Barton. Thank you very much for the conservation, for the proactiveness, and for the connectivity between East and West that you want to bring with this development. It's really great.
All right, any other comments? Councilmember Flores-Cale.
All right, thank you. I have a few questions. So did any of these variances go to the Board of Adjustments?
That are in the planned unit development?
Yeah, yes.
No, because the planned unit development, per our code and also per case law with the state, it allows to have those variances built into the document itself. It allows for flexible planning when it's appropriate, and as a cohesive project, they make sense.
Okay, that's what I thought. And my concern is, like, development agreements kind of go around P and Z and go around the Board of Adjustments, and I really would rather utilize them. So will, so, well, normally, would a variance be needed for a four-story mixed-use building?
It depends on how the building is going to be designed. So for example, in the CBD 2 zoning district, we have a maximum height of 45 feet by right here in downtown. Whenever, and this starts getting into the building side of this, I'm not as familiar, but there are some basic tenants. For example, a typical floor plate to floor plate is 12 feet, when you include the open space for people to stand in, and also the running of the ductwork and all that kind of stuff. So when you, really comes down to it, four stories is really pushing it from an effect, like a reality, so you're really looking at three stories. That may have been more of a.
Well, for some reason, I thought there was like a three-story, but are you telling me it's a height limitation and not a story limitation?
It's a bit of both. A lot of it depends on the building code and what you have to achieve to make it work from the International Code Council, but also it depends on the zoning district as well. They go hand in hand.
Okay, so then I have a question about the development agreement. Will the county participate in the maintenance and operations of the Parkland dedication, which is half the acreage of the parcel?
That's not included for the county to participate in maintenance of the park.
Okay. On Page 9, Section 4.05, Owners' Rights to Continue Development, it says the city agrees that it will not, during the term of this agreement, impose or attempt to impose any moratorium on building or development within the project. I don't know if I'm mistaken or not, but I don't remember reading this language in any other DA, and it kind of makes me uncomfortable. Can you tell me which staff member places language in the agreement?
This is standard language that we provide when developers are asking not to, especially when there is vesting, that they do not, that cities do not place a moratorium on construction.
Yeah, so do we know if it's been placed in any other agreement, is what I'm asking? I do a pretty.
Yes.
Okay.
It's, it is basic standard terms.
So what happens in the, in the event that the city realizes we have, like, a water shortage?
That's for emergency purposes, and you could have a moratorium on that.
So what does this one refer to?
Let me look at it again. You're on Page 9.
Yes, Section 4.5, Owners' Rights. I just want to make sure the city is not limiting itself in case of.
Right, so this is, again, this is dealing with building or development, so it doesn't deal with water, so if a moratorium on any type of issuing building permits, you would not be putting a moratorium on that.
Okay, so that's just for building permits? All right, Section, Page 10, Section 4.6D. This section states that fitness court, quote, "may be moved to a different location by mutual agreement of the parties." However, this section does not state whether that means within or outside of the location of the development. So in the event the parties mutually agree to place the fitness court outside of the development, does this mean the developer will no longer be required to pay the $105,000 cash contribution required for the city?
So, and I'm not finding the section, but let me just, from, because I remember the section as well. It would come back to City Council as an amendment. So that's when it's talking about both parties, that's how it would come back to you. So you would decide whether you're going outside the district or not, but you, that wouldn't be the decision that would be made or recommended.
Okay, so parties, I just want to make sure we're covered. Parties, okay, I guess it's only defined as all or any of the city and the city owner, so does that, that would include council?
The parties are defined in the first paragraph?
No, in under definitions.
She's in the DA agreement under D. She wants to identify who the parties are.
Page 3. I just want to make sure, because we've been waiting a really long time for this exercise equipment, for at least a year, and if we're going to not put it in there, I would like to just not put it in there now and make plans, as opposed to wait another year.
Again, so, again, parties is defined in the first paragraph, and it would be coming back to you as an amendment to this agreement, and it would be agreed between City Council and the developer.
Okay. So overall, I really like the development. I think it's great. I think it's going to bring a lot to the city. I am, however, really cautious to continue to use PID-TERS as a term of financing. I don't mind the PID, because in essence, it'll pay for itself, but the fact that we have to include a TERS in order to decrease the PID payouts is kind of bothersome to me. So is there, I mean, at what point did, I guess, the TERS, was a TERS realized that it was going to be required in order to be able to finance this?
All right, well, hang on. We have discussed this at extreme length, so I'm not sure what you're trying to necessarily get at.
No, I'm just wondering if a TERS is going to be necessary. Can we have a PID? And we have to have a TERS then?
Yes, it's in the development agreement that's proposed as a PID-TERS, and I understand you're saying you don't like it, but.
I just think we're using it a lot as a city, and it's keeping money out of the general fund and to the rest of the areas. So in my opinion, we could not develop this area, and the city would be okay. We wouldn't need retail right there, whereas we have other parts of our city that don't have the basic infrastructure to sustain in order to have basic retail. So that's where my concern is. Do I want this development to come? Yes. Do I want the PID? I'm okay with that. But then to include a TERS, where the city, and now we're going to have to maintain 13 acres of floodplain, I think that is a kind of a burden as opposed to a benefit.
Okay, I'm going to take the floor up before you do it, because I actually have a couple of things I want to say. There's a big difference, in my opinion. I've gone through years of dealing with development proposals that come before. We see a lot that look really great. I don't know that we've seen one that looks necessarily better than yours, but definitely some just as nice. But there's a big difference between legacy landowners who partner with development communities, or who partner with developers, who are a part of that legacy vision, and then can sustain that vision over periods of time and invest significant resources in bringing that vision to bear, and wait four years, or actually six, depending on how you look at it, to bring that project about. What we often see happen in the city of Kyle is legacy landowners wanting to sell their land, move out of town, while speculators come in from outside and try to figure out how they can make the most possible money. It is very clear to me that you are not that, it's not just about the legacy, it's about your actions. It's about your actions as it relates to this particular project. So I just want to commend you because when it comes to legacy projects, this is, this is at the top of, top of my, my list. It's probably the project that I'm most proud to vote for. Do, do I think that it will have the biggest impact of anything I've ever voted for? No, but it'll be up there for sure. But in ter, in terms of a vote that I'm proud to make for a family that has demonstrated their absolute commitment to this community and to putting together a first-rate project, I'm very proud to vote for this. So I just wanted to say that. Does anybody else have any further comments? All those in favor, say aye. Aye? All opposed? All right. Motion carries seven to zero. Is there any objection to finally passing agenda item number 14, which was the original zoning? Seeing none, agenda item 14 is finally passed. All right. Actually, no, we did 16.
No, we didn't.
Yeah, it's just a public hearing.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so, yeah, so there's a request to move agenda item number 24 up by staff because we have an applicant who's here. So if there are no objections, I'm going to bring agenda item 24 up, consider and take possible action. Y'all want to take five?
Yes. Can we?
You don't want to take five?
I want to keep rolling. It's up to you guys.
All right. Next up is agenda item number 24. Consider and take possible action on a request from Luis Woodertz and Marshawn Hardaway to waive city code section 41-142-F2, which requires connection to city services. Mr. Barton.
Evening, Mayor and Councilman. I'm Marv, City Engineer. Mayor and Council, on occasion, we get requests from citizens to tie into our wastewater system, but sometimes it's a little bit difficult and very expensive to do that. In this particular case, we do have some owners that want to, they would like to tie into our wastewater system. The problem is the cost to do that is going to be very expensive. The owners right now are planning to remove and replace their existing manufactured homes and they've also discovered that their septic systems are failing. So we looked at a couple of options for them to be able to do that connection, but based on the cost, construction cost and based on the fact that they're not only purchasing the new homes, they're actually going to have to put in new septic systems. We feel the construction cost for this particular project is really something that we want to recommend that we waive that particular requirement. The, I'm not sure if you had any other questions on that, but I'll be happy to answer your question.
Okay. Do we have any questions referencing this agenda item? Councilmember Floris Cale?
I asked all my questions via emails and I appreciate it. So I would just like to make a motion to approve agenda item number 24.
Second.
Okay. There is a motion to approve agenda item number 24 by Councilmember Floris Cale, second by Councilmember Parsley. Is there any discussion on the item? Councilmember Zuniga?
Thank you, Leon, for answering those questions also through email. I do have another question. I, I remember that you said that there were two other projects that were put on CIPs to try to increase that capacity for wastewater. So when we look at Opal and these, where these houses are, how do we determine like that that's not where we want, that, that we're not going to extend the wastewater that far? Like, how do we determine, how do we make that determination? Like where we're, where we're extending the wastewater and where we stop extending the wastewater? Just so, so that in the future, as we, we can start to fix this kind of situation for homeowners that are maybe, they get the short end of the stick because they're, they're a little further, further away. So do...
Councilmember, the, the examples that I used were Southside Wastewater and the LA Brants Wastewater Project. Those were developed before I started here, but they actually went through an engineering study to decide what was going to be the impact of the number of LUEs or the services that they would need for those particular lines. And so they looked at the whole area. They did actually two studies on that, those two particular bases to look and see how big the lines need to be. And so they produced, they didn't take the scope of work to the max. They could have added lines throughout the whole southwest part of the city, but they chose not to do that. They chose to put in the main trunk lines to at least if somebody wants to develop, at least they would have a way to get to some wastewater in that vicinity. For example, the Southside Project, there's a lift station that's on Post Road. That's the phase that we just built is phase one. There's a phase two and a phase three. As many as over 8,000 LUEs can tie into that lift station in the future. But somebody's going to have to extend the lines to the rest of those folks. So the, the plans back there, I'm assuming, were just to put the basic infrastructure in and as, as these areas develop, they will run those wastewater lines up through the development process. So that's the best answer that I can give you right now. So the, the city makes that decision, the council votes on those decisions, those recommendations, and if council wants us to take us, take it to the maximum limit of the, the project, then that can be done, but it's just a matter of money and time.
Right. So I figured it was like a, like a density equation. Where can we get the most hookups for the least amount of, of the work, right? So, and maybe there's just not enough of the, enough density there. That would, that would make it easier.
That lift station, that particular lift station I'm talking about, there's a development to the west side of the railroad tracks. So that's pretty dense development. We're hoping that someday they will eventually eliminate those septic systems they're on and tie into that system. So that's why we actually went underneath the railroad track to push it to the west side.
Sure.
That hopefully they could tie in. But as you can see, the Paramount subdivision, 150 subdivision, they're, they're all tying into that line that was placed in there with the Southside Project. So they're all having to run their lines to tie into it. And we have other developments that we're talking to and we're trying to make sure that the lines they design are adequate to handle any additional requirements from the rest of the, the development areas that we're looking at.
So it just seems to me like we need to really be focusing on wastewater lines. Get more of them out there so that more of these homes can tie in and, and we're not depending on the developers to come in to do it.
In those particular projects, that was the intent, was to get that, those lines out there so that we could provide that service and, and of course create development.
But this was an ETJ area, wasn't it? I think that's what was in the notes. They were, they got annexed?
At one time they were, they were outside of city limits and they were annexed. And back then, they just didn't do a lot of wastewater systems out in the county, so...
Thank you, Leon.
I have one before we go. I know this family, the Greens and the Harways. Just like the Bardons, they've lived here for many, many years. They were a, the great family. Their family provided a business to our city many, many years ago and provided a lot of services, traffic services throughout the whole community. And so it's to no, no fault of their own that the city grows the, the way it is. And so, yes, a lot of these pipes, according to what you're saying, Councilman Zuniga, we need to be able to connect to them because these are residents that have lived here a long time and it's really an improvement to the infrastructure in the area. So that's a good point that you're making, that we need to be able to start looking at connecting to some of the older neighborhoods as well and, and also on that end. So with that, I fully support approving this so that way we could be able to get their connections corrected. Because again, these are families that have been here for many years and they deserve to have the connections just like everyone else on that end. So there's a motion on the table, Mayor.
Okay. I think, but I think the agenda item is to allow them to stay on septic.
Yes.
Okay. So go ahead, make the motion.
It's already made.
All right. Motion, I got you.
Motion's still on the table.
All right. Motion's on the table. Is there further discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you all. All right. Next up is agenda item number 18. Consider a request to waive the committee ordinances to allow for an increase from seven to 12 committees, members for the Community Gardens and the Trails Committees. Ms. Espinoza.
All right. I'm going to share my screen. Mayor and Council, Mariana Espinoza, Parks and Recreation Director. And also with me today, I have our Park Board Chair, Amanda Stark, Park Board Member, Laurlee Harris, and both staff liaisons to the Trails Committee and the Community Gardens Committee. This agenda item is a request to waive the committee ordinance that allows for an increase from seven to 12 members for the Community Gardens and the Trails Committee. The court ordinance states that councils shall generally appoint no more than seven persons as regular members to serve in a committee unless the council determines that appointment of more regular members is appropriate for the committee. City Council approved a resolution for establishing a Trails Committee and a Community Garden Committee on March 7th. City Council meeting at the recommendation by the Parks Board in order to reach the goal of involving community involvement in these projects, which was a request by citizens at our Park Board meetings. At that meeting, our Park Board Chair, Amanda Stark, presented the committee's purpose, meeting schedule, duties and recommendation of appointment of 12 committee members to each committee. Excuse me. Since then, we have posted applications online and conducted interviews. The Trails Committee received 17 applications. We reached out to all 17 and we interviewed 13. The Community Gardens Committee received 25 applications. We reached out to all 25 and interviewed 14. Staff recommends approval of this waiver request to appoint 12 members to each committee. And if approved, these 24 committee members would represent a total of 14 different Kyle subdivisions out of our 46 subdivisions that we have. Again, this is a temporary committee that would provide recommendations to staff. If you have any questions, I'll take them.
Councilmember Parsley.
Thank you. So I, I initially was wondering the same, you know, how many members? There's a lot of members for these committees, but I appreciate the feedback Mariana gave me. I think that, you know, if this is something that is driven by the public and by the residents, then it's something that, you know, we should be bringing forward. So I am okay with doing that, with waiving that number.
Mayor Proti.
Okay. So Ms. Stark. I guess what I was, I was originally reading this saying, okay, we're going from seven to now 12 and I look at the long list of individuals, I'm like, oh my goodness, I think I'll be able to agree on these things, you know? Because you have a lot. And I remember when we had our Adcot Committee for the Veterans Drive, there was a lot of people there too as well. But I think Mariana may have cleared it up and maybe you can answer this as well. Of the numerous subdivisions and neighborhoods we have in our city now and we're continuing to grow, do you feel that we need to have that many committee members? And also with your Parks Board, you think they'll be divided, divided up into specific regions?
Yes, we definitely need 12. Two, two slots already are, one for each committee is a Park Board staff. So, and then there's also, what's the other one? A city staff. I apologize. There's also city staff. So that's already two spots taken. We feel that the city is better represented, the more that we have available. But of course, we don't want it to be get so big that it's, it's, we can't keep it under control. But being able to have that representation, we believe is vital. And that much input, even just on our, our board and city council, just having the different ideas and all the input has been incredibly helpful. So 12 is definitely... Like I said, and I think the biggest part of that is since we already do have one Parks Board and one city staff, just takes away two spots already. So...
Okay.
And then what was the other part of your question?
The other question would be like as far as, of course, the, the division of the, the parks as far as like the neighborhoods that are around, has it been maybe discussed about like dividing it up into different regions? Let's just say District 2, District 4, District 6. Not in those sense, but just certain people are assigned east, east, east of the Seaton Hospital and some people are at Plum Creek. So that way they can, or is it just going to be everybody all together making decisions versus the people that are in the areas, depending on where they live, they have a better maybe idea of the type of activities that go on? So maybe more people jog on Plum Creek area versus a lot of people do a lot of cycling over there near Water Leaf like where Zuniga's at.
So I, I understand your question and to me, I think that if you just assign different people, different parts according to where they live, you can miss out on some things. I do not, I live in, I live in Steeplechase and so I don't, I don't visit over the east side. But if I, you know, my kids are over there. So for instance, the swimming pool, that's where the pool is because I go over there with my kids. I wouldn't be able to have that representation on the east side because I live, or on, at the pool, because I live on the east side. But I go over there more than somebody who doesn't have kids that lives in that area. So I feel that having as much, our input from as much of the community would be vital. To, to having all the input.
Well, that's great. That, that makes more sense. That way it makes everybody more flexible and adaptable in that sense where they could, you know, go out and venture off and so forth.
And, and I think it kind of keeps everybody involved and understanding what's going on on the other parts of the city too, if they haven't been a part of it before and have that opportunity to do now.
Well, thank you again and I appreciate all your hard work on the Parks Board. You guys are doing an amazing job and I know you're very busy yourself. And so I wanted to say thank you on that. So that's all I have.
Councilman Heiser.
Yeah, just a couple of thoughts here. I feel like seven is a, is a good number, just in general for our committees. And having 12 people and having that many cooks in the kitchen, knowing that there is a lot of division between people who are pro-trails in the city as to what kinds of trails that we're supposed to have. Feel like it's only going to make it more difficult for there to be clarity on recommendations that can be made by this committee. So for me, I see making it 12 is, is decreasing its potential effectiveness. And that would be my fear of, of having 12 people on, on this or any committee for that matter. But specifically with this one, knowing that there is not a collective vision among the, the Trails advocates out there as to what, what they want. Some want concrete, some want dirt, you know? I think it really makes, it makes it more difficult to come up with coherent ideas for us to consider.
Councilman Brechel.
I agree. I question the efficacy of 12 people in a body in general. And I, I would be willing to increase it, given the fact that there is staff and a Park Board member on there, to maybe nine. But with that said, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to deny the consideration for 12.
Motion by Councilman Brechel, seconded by Councilmember Floris Cale. Is there discussion on the motion? I, I completely agree with that and I don't think that the Parks Board or the staff member and the member of the Park Staff or the...
That's correct, Mayor. They're not part of the 12.
They do not, they do not have to be on that committee. The seven members, the way the Board's Commission's policy is written, is designed for, just as every other boards and commission and committee that we have, all seven members should be residents of the, the community. And so we shouldn't be filling those seats with staff.
And another, the other reason, our main reason for pursuing with 12, our recommendation to pursue with 12 was is because we've already notified 24 residents who thought they were going to get a pony twice already and we've had to postpone it. And it is a temporary committee. So we was like, well, if we go with 12 now, it's great. We get all this involvement. And then if council decides they want to go to a permanent committee when this one expires in June, then we could look at maybe doing seven, but whatever council's desire is, we'll move forward with it.
The problem is that our policy is clear, so that it, it should have never gone out as a 12-member committee because we have an ordinance in place that limits to seven and it wasn't presented to us as a 12-member board when the initial proposal was made. So that's the, that's the challenge. And I, I don't know what to say, but we do need to be clear about the seven-member rule because it, but going to 12 establishes a very dangerous precedent. And while maybe this one particular, one of these two boards might be a good situation and work out well, it does, it does have the ability to proliferate and, and cause additional challenges.
I completely understand. And in the March 7th meeting where Board Member Stark did present and council voted to approve the committees, she did say, she verbally stated 12. But I do understand what you're, what you're saying.
So, so what were you saying, Mayor? Should we be voting against our own ordinance?
If we approve 12, we, you cannot have a 12-member committee because our policy on boards and commissions and committees limits to seven. And so, and it's, it's, it's designed that way for a reason and I don't want to change the policy. And as a result, I don't want to grant a waiver on this. But that's just my opinion. So is there any further discussion? Councilman Floris Cale.
I feel really bad because I know people want to be active, but can we reiterate that they can come to the meetings? People can still come to meetings and be heard and be a part and be involved. I don't want to discourage that. If anything, what can we do to encourage more people to come? So seeing that there was quite the, the attraction to this, I wonder, is there something that we can do?
we can do? It doesn't have to be, it doesn't have to be 12, but is anybody opposed to nine? And I know we're voting against our own, but this is temporary, right? This is only until, when?
This committee, one runs till March, the other till June of 2020. That's a long time.
Yeah, but I think that's very likely it's gonna roll into permanent, and then, if we don't, if we don't stop it here, it is going to trickle out moving forward.
I agree, I agree.
We've had, we've had issues with Boards and Commissions. They change the scope, scope increases, and they get away from us a little bit, and so, keeping it within the boundaries of what we've created, I think, is valuable.
Okay, can I say, "Thank you"? You're gonna be so missed, Amanda. You are such a great person, and I'm glad you termed out. I'm glad you didn't get kicked off or something.
You guys just want to, you know I'm gonna be back.
I know, I know, I would love to encourage you to continue, whatever it is. You've been so active, and your presence is appreciated, so, thank you. When's your last day?
It's in August or September.
Okay.
August 31st.
Okay.
You guys are almost done with me.
No, I just want to say thank you, and thank you to all the people who applied and everybody that's interested. I know people say this is a good problem to have, but it's not. It's hard to say no. It's hard to say no to 12 people, so, I don't want, you know, if exactly just seven people could apply, that would be great. Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye? All opposed?
No.
Our motion carries six to one.
Mayor, what was the motion?
Motion to deny.
To deny, so, seven members, so, okay.
You can straw poll it, random selection, whatever you want to do, that's the number it has to be. All right, next up, we're gonna bring Agenda Items 19 and 20 together. These were postponed at the last meeting. Approve a contract with AGH2O Holdings LLC, Ronrock, Texas, in an amount not to exceed $307,777 to furnish and install new restroom foundations and utilities for restrooms at five city parks. And Agenda Item 20, approve a contract with Restroom Facilities LTD, Marble Falls, Texas, in an amount not to exceed $860,599 for the design and construction of restrooms at five city parks and other associated materials, as included in the proposal. Ms. Espinoza.
Mayor and Council, Mariana Espinoza, Parks and Recreation Director. At the last City Council meeting, staff were directed to go back and look at the park restrooms and add a porch and a water fountain to every park restroom facility, which we did, and to expand the Mary Kyle Hartson Park restroom to a four stall. Mr. Hector Garcia with the Restroom Facilities LTD is here today, and our foundation company, AGH2O, is also present online virtually, if you have any further questions. We were able to bring this back and keep it below the 25% increase from the base bid.
So, it's the full, it's everything we asked for in the last meeting?
That's correct.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Agenda Items 19 and 20.
Second.
Motion by Mayor, seconded by Councilmember Floris Cale. Is there discussion on the motion? Councilmember Zuniga.
Yes, I had two questions. One is for your guy. It is very hot here in Texas. We're going through a heat wave, so I was asked by residents, what about the cooling of these restrooms? Are there, what type of insulation do you have in there? We're basically, are they concerned, will they become very hot sheds?
Yeah, Hector Garcia with Restroom Facilities, and I thank you all for having me here. We actually have these buildings all throughout Texas, a lot down here in the Hill Country. You can kind of see them in the pictures here, in the renderings. They've got really large vents on the front sides and the back sides of the buildings, and then, there's a gap underneath the door. It promotes just a general flow of air through there. As heat rises, obviously, it's gonna pull air through under the door. The buildings actually stay surprisingly cool, of course, as cool as you can get when it's 190 degrees.
They're not air-conditioned.
They're not air-conditioned, no, but when you put air conditioning inside of a restroom, it can cause other problems with moisture building up and whatnot. Doors opening and closing cause a lot of issues also with air conditioning, just overheating, overworking, but the natural ventilation works really well. And like I said, we've got buildings all throughout, and we have no complaints throughout all of central Texas, all of Texas, actually.
So, does the size, I was trying to find it, what are these, 20 by 20, or what are 10 by 12s?
They're 20 by about 11, yeah, and they've got basically two rooms, two toilets, two labs in each one. The larger building over at Mary Kyle, we've extended that one to two toilets on the women's side with one lab, and then a toilet, a urinal, and a lab in the men's side.
Thank you. And I had one question for Mariana. Mariana, thank you for bringing these back. I think that these are all really much nicer, and I'm glad, even if you had to go over budget, I think I would still push for all of them. But what's gonna happen to the old ones? What are we planning about that?
The plan is to use the old restrooms as storage for the parks' maintenance, and then for the restrooms at Lake Kyle to possibly become office space for staff and art maintenance, or storage maintenance.
Okay.
Maintenance, storage.
And then, these will be set, where are these gonna be set, then? If the old ones are going to remain?
So, for the most part, they're in close proximity to where the current restrooms already are. The only one that is a little bit further away is Lake Kyle. It's gonna be behind the log cabin, I mean, closer to the horseshoes.
Thank you, I like them.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you. All right, next up, it's Agenda Item Number 21. This item was postponed at the last meeting. First reading, approve an ordinance adopting the land use assumptions, capital improvement plan, and establish an updated water impact fee totaling $79.84 per living unit equivalent, and updated wastewater impact fee totaling $61.71 per LUE. This item has a public hearing, was left open at the last meeting. Mr. Langley, do you have comments on this?
I think we're looking to close the public hearing. If there are any comments here, we can then close the public hearing, and then, we're looking at bringing this back at a future time. We did get some additional feedback, which will potentially cause us to change some of the recommendations here.
All right, so, if there are no objections, I'm gonna open the public hearing. Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone who wishes to come forward and speak? Seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Public hearing is now closed, and so, your recommendation, Mr. Langley, is no action, and that you're gonna go through the process again?
Yes, sir.
And bring it back?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
So, I think we can wait on the presentation, unless we want to discuss it. All right, thank you. 23? All right, next up, Agenda Item 23. Second reading, an ordinance meeting Chapter 53, zoning of the city of Kyle, Texas, for the purpose of rezoning approximately .52 acres from ACT Retail Services for property located 1121 East FM 150. We voted on this at the last meeting. I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by the Mayor, seconded by Councilmember Floris Cale. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Is that it?
That's it.
All right, motion to adjourn.
Second.
We are adjourned.
Good job, gentlemen.